I just texted you. Wait, did you do three hours? That's just a shout. Yeah, oh, I saw, some days I do. On, uh, Wednesdays usually. It's a regular, at the regular meeting, so sometimes I have to take a break.
Yeah.
Of course you do.
Ray, if you are here.
What's too late?
Yeah, I figured it was, no?
Well, it should just be one of us because... You're meeting three, is that what you're hanging out?
Yeah.
More than one of us.
When it's the first time?
We're going, um, let's find out, because...
So what if you go down?
They checked it before we made the meeting, Mike was looking in there.
I just left Mike a message, he would give me a call. I didn't even know about that.
Yeah, and, uh, the nominations are due sometime later in the month. So, uh, that's also on here.
Okay, guys, we're gonna get started, good morning. Everybody had a good weekend?
We need to tell that nomination.
Uh, we're gonna, this is our weekly workshop to go over the draft agenda until tomorrow and whatever other issues we have. Uh, before we get to the regular agenda, um, start with the roll call first, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantle Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frunchhouse.
Okay, this may be an speaking tape, as usual, so if you're called upon, uh, please make sure you state your name and where you're from or who you represent, um, and speak clearly so that the microphones can pick you up for the record. Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry, but you, I wanna ignore the first part of the agenda and go right to one of our guests we have here, so I can let them get back to their township and get to work. Um, we have an issue that was brought up, uh, a couple weeks ago about, uh, the road in Warren Township, and I believe, uh, Anderson Anthony Road, is that what it is? Um, where we had, uh, our county paving crew out there fixing the road and, uh, paving the road, got into it with a citizen, a landowner, doesn't live, doesn't reside in Warren Township, but he, um, owns property there that he just transferred to somebody, was in the process of being sold, and he owns another chunk of property, still owns. Um, he was upset that there were no flaggers and that he didn't feel there was proper signage on the road and almost got hit head-on, I guess, by an elderly woman that came around the bend. So he shared some words with our employees, the engineer employees, and, uh, and turned it into a little bit of a argument scuffle type thing. Um, police chief did respond and the county engineer responded to the scene also, and, uh, the county engineer decided to pull the guys off the job for safety reasons, even though the chief was there and offered police protection for the remainder of the job. From what I understand, they get about a day and a half left to do it. I received a phone call from the superintendent of, um, La Brea Schools, who said that he's having complaints with his bus drivers about it being uneven, uh, pavement, and, uh, it is a narrow road, it's around a bend, and he said if it stays that way through the winter, he foresees some accidents happening, and not only that, but tearing up his buses as they try to straddle the part of the road that is, um, paved. Uh, I got a call then also where I talked to, uh, I did call the chief, uh, who's with us here today. I called a township trustee, Yoho, and he said they had a special meeting and they found, uh, from the prosecutor's office, that no charges are gonna be filed on either anyone with the county or any, or the gentleman that they had the issue with, uh, but the chief had offered me, um, assurance that if we continue to finish the job, um, he will be there himself present and with another officer if we, if they deem worthy. And I also offered, if we needed to do something for the citizens, like provide some sheriff's deputies, we would entertain looking at that to ensure the safety of the whole crew. Um, the chief also assured me that he would talk to the individual that had the problem to make sure that he's aware not to be on scene when this happens, to prevent himself from getting in trouble. And basically, we just want the road done, whereas what, uh, there's a timeliness, um, the engineer said if we don't get it done soon, he's gotta shut it down. Um, the supplier that the engineer gets the asphalt from, um, said on the phone that they asphalt all the way till November, you know, that we buy, we supply not only them but other municipalities, and he said it should be able to be done all the way until, um, late November, early December, uh, based on past years. So we do have some time to get this done, um, according to the asphalt provider. And now, I know the engineer's gonna redo his schedule, he's got, uh, manpower things, he's got union things probably he's gotta deal with, um, but bottom line is for the safety of the citizens, we started a job, there was an issue, the problem is done now, problem is rectified, um, to the best of our ability, and with police presence there, I would foresee that there wouldn't be any further problems. I mean, these guys are grown men, they know how to handle the job, do their job well, and they, and the engineer said they can get it done in about a day and a half. Um, now there is labor cost to move things in and out. Um, trustee Yoho did tell me, hey, if there's any cost overruns, if there's something there that we gotta absorb, we'll look into it, we just, we want to, we, we, we need this road finished paved, because if we go into it, the snow hits, then you have uneven pavement, just with plowing and cars coming around the bend there, it's, it's a safety hazard, and I, I gotta agree with him, and I believe the superintendent is telling the truth too, that he has deep concern for his bus drivers, the safety of his kids, and the, uh, safety of his citizens on the road, the kids driving to and from school there, which is, is not far from, from where this road is. Um, so with that, I, I talked to Chief Harold, and, uh, when I called the engineer's office and brought it up to Mr. Goodman here when he was at the meeting, um, they both said they hadn't heard from Warren Township. I've heard from two trustees that said they've called there, and the police chief that said he's reached out to the engineer's office also, so they are making an attempt to contact the engineer, um, for whatever reason, I don't know why they're not getting hold of him, um, but he, they asked to be here today to kinda state their case of why it's safe, how they're gonna protect, uh, what the incident was, and, and basically ensure the safety of our employees, that's gonna be first and foremost, the safety of our employees and the safety of the people driving that road. And I think there's a solution here, and that's what, um, I'd like to ask Commissioner Cannon Lee to assist me with this, to, let's get the road finished, let's do what we gotta do to get the road finished. I've also been made aware there were three or four other roads we're supposed to do that they're potentially backing out of with the county, which is gonna affect and hurt the citizens in Warren Township, um, and anyone that drives those roads, and, uh, we just want this problem to go away and to a peaceful solution for all parties, the best that we can do. So, with that, um, we have, uh, trustee Ed Anthony, and we have, uh, Chief Harold here, and you can approach the table a little bit so that we can pick you up on the mic and state your piece.
Edward Anthony Warren Township trustee, and first of all, I apologize for even having to take some of you guys' time, because I know you're on a schedule here and you have a lot on your agenda, but unfortunately, we're in this situation, um, Commissioner Malloy's kinda stated pretty much everything there, we just wanna add a couple things. It's just really amazing that we have to come to this point to get one of our roads. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Anderson Anthony Road, it's a very narrow road with deep, deep ditches on both sides. Um, our concern is not only for the residents of Warren Township, but for anyone traveling that road, if you have a truck coming down one way, you literally, literally have to stop and let the other truck, traffic go, it's, it's, it's fat, and I know we're working to get that maybe widened in the future, but right now, we have three quarters of a road done, and what's even more unsafe is you have one half that's completely paved, so you have a three and a half inch, three and a half inch drop-off. So our school buses that come down there, they've already, our bus drivers have given several complaints, they're scared to go down there, they have three stops, and literally now the residents have said to the school that they will not even get their children, children picked up there, that they're taking to school. This is all over, uh, an issue that we have with a guy that wasn't even our resident, and he doesn't own property, and I think you were given misinformation, he never had property in Warren Township, and really Warren Township's section is paved, it's Braceville now that, that isn't paved, and it doesn't matter, 'cause it's still adjoined with us in Braceville. Braceville has recently, as of Friday, offered a letter to them, okay, saying that they would pay for the expenses, since it is now Braceville's area, and they're, I'm not, I can't speak for someone else, but the, uh, interpretation we got from their trustee out there, Aaron Young, said that the engineer's office said, no, this isn't about Braceville, we don't need anything from you, this is about us and Warren Township, and their chief not making arrests and everything else. This has turned into, I mean, this is childish, and you know the unfortunate thing, as we're talking right now, it could be a major accident on that road, a major accident on that road, and then how's everyone gonna feel then? And it's that bad, I mean, it, it really is unfortunate. So, I just wanna make sure, you know, that you understand, we have contacted, he sat there the very first day this incident occurred, said I will not let him speak, said I will give you security, I will stay here today, I will come here tomorrow, I will come as many days you want to get this finished, and no, we want him arrested. So to get back to that real quick, we went to the prosecutor's office, after statements were obtained, after all, everybody talked to both sides, and the prosecutor's office, Gil Blair and Louis, both said that there is no grounds, no grounds for a protection order or any charges to be filed. The sheriff's department upon themselves went over there, which they kept, 'cause that's their area too, and they were told the same thing. So now this really comes down to, because a letter wasn't given to Jeff Goodman, and Jeff Goodman, we gotta, cannot give him a letter, 'cause what a lot of people don't understand, he's retained by Warren Township, that's a conflict of interest rate there, so we're not gonna type a letter to him when we might have to use him down the road in this matter, makes no sense, and that's what they're hanging their hat on, with no letter, no written letter was given to Jeff Goodman. Randy Smith was told verbally, Randy, the commissioners, you guys turned around and had a conversation in your last meeting about, I believe, on this. So, can we write a letter? We could, but at the same time, our other attorney that we retained said, that's a conflict of interest, no, you should not give Attorney Goodman a letter stating that we'll provide security, it's already been said, plus, it's a conflict of interest and that's why we can't give a letter to him. So this all comes down to, very confusing matter, it's something that I know you think maybe in the back of your mind, you're wasting their time, but here's, it's, it's serious. And then our other roads now, we're, we were advised, uh, not by Randy Smith, and now we're hearing not to stir the pot, that we had four other roads that's supposed to be done, and now because of this, they're not. I mean, come on, this is ridiculous, our residents deserve better, I mean, it shouldn't be anybody picking and choosing that, oh, Eric Howland, you're gonna get done, Hubbard, you're gonna get done, Champ, you're gonna, I mean, we were set on them roads, first, I think we were first or second township to even submit our roads in, they did do three of them, and then they said we're gonna start doing the next, them next month, within this happen. So I know that's a different matter, all we want is a good working relationship with the Trowah County Engineer's Office, that's what we strive for, and this is, it, it's getting to a point where every time we have a project, and here you can even allude to it, it's just, it's, it's, it's problems, and I mean, I, I don't understand, and if it's, yeah, I was elected, just like all you guys were selected, to fight for our residents, I'm gonna fight for my residents, they deserve that too, and so does Braceville residents, this isn't a Warren Township thing, it's Braceville too. So, my plea to you is this, please get something done, so we can get this road, it is a safety factor, all the other roads, if they don't wanna do our roads, there's nothing we can do about it, but this is a safety factor, and I really think, the last thing I'm gonna say on it, it's a shame that I gotta come up here into a workshop meeting and waste your time and plead to have a road project finished, because, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's ever happened, and I'm aware of it. Mario, you've been here for, Commissioner, you've been here for a long time, so now why is this turning into what it is? And this poor gentleman, which has did a great job for us, the police chief, Benny Harold, is getting slandered. I mean, you know, I don't know if you're aware, our residents, our residents on Anderson Anthony were sent out a letter saying that it's his fault why our road is not being done. This is ridiculous, folks, it says, this is un, it's unchartered, it's, it should not, it's not professional, and I mean, I'm not pointing fingers here, 'cause I, I don't wanna do that, I'm just saying it's a shame we are to this point to get all, one of our roads completed. I don't know. Randy, what do you think of it? Thank you.
How you all doing? Chief Harold from Warren Township, the dub. Uh, there's no names on these, because I wanted you all to be fair, so you know that you're getting the same, you're getting the same thing. What had happened was, I believe this is, wasn't happened on August third, yeah, August third, sat around, called forty-eight hours, I was called to go to Anderson Anthony, due to a resident, well, a person being... So I showed up, and I spoke to a foreman, the foreman told me that this, the guy sitting over there, which was Rick Keaton, was sitting over there, he, uh, he was coming over here with his camera, taking pictures, and, uh, he wasn't alive, 'cause the truck went in the ditch, it went in the ditch on Anderson Anthony, he was, got over too far and dropped down, the ditch is already... So what had happened was, uh, I said, okay, he'd come over there, and the, the guy that I talked to, who ended up being Mr. Gerberry, stated that he came up in his face and with his phone, and Mr. Gerberry pushed the phone away from his face. Okay, whatever. So I told him, I said, well, sit tight, and he goes, well, the day before, there was an incident where he threatened to kill one of our guys, I go, what? He goes, yeah. Why didn't anybody call me yesterday? But, okay, well, let me get his information, and then I'll do a report for him for the menacing, and I'll do a report for Mr. Rick Keaton, because he wants to file an assault or he pushed the phone out. I did not get Denny Malloy's, or Denny Malloy's, I'm sorry, Kenny. Steve Gerberry's name, I did not get his name at all, I, I probably should've, but I didn't realize it was gonna turn into... I handled many calls up in law enforcement for over thirty years, worked for City of Warren, in fact, for most of them. Uh, so I went over, got Rick Keaton's information, hey, Rick, stay away from them, just, I'll do a report for you, pick it up tomorrow and go see the prosecutor. Went up to them guys, finished their information, got their report, got back in the vehicle at that time, Randy Smith had showed up, and, uh, when he got out of the vehicle, I'm parked here, he's there and straight ahead, didn't even make eye contact with me, okay, whatever. So I was telling him, listen, you guys gotta get a, get a copy of this report, go down, see the prosecutor, and see if it warrants any charges. And, uh, I said, because of misdemeanor, we didn't see it, we really just take information down, let the prosecutor decide on what, what to do. That's been like that since I started Warren, before that, I mean, it's just, that's how it is, if, if we don't see the incident, and it's a misdemeanor, usually have to just dig the report, send it over to a prosecutor, have, have them decide on what to do. Well, Randy says, you're not gonna arrest him? I said, no, shut it down, that's what he said, shut it down, my guys aren't safe here. I said, what? My guys aren't safe here, shut it down. I said, listen, I'll stay here, if that's how you feel, until you're done, I mean, I'll just sit right here, you guys don't have to shut nothing down, I'm here, just do your job, whatever. Nope, we're shutting it down. I said, all right, well, if you come back tomorrow, please call, and I'll come down here and I'll sit with you guys if you feel threatened by this guy. Cricket, says Mr. Goodman said in the last meeting, cricket, that's what he said. So he called my office, Randy, or I mean Jeff Goodman, I don't have to answer to Jeff Goodman, okay, Jeff Goodman doesn't, I'm not more than him. Yeah, I told the boss, the main guy, that if you need me, call and I'll come. I didn't get the message from Jeff Goodman, 'cause our phones are messed up, so he sends a letter in the mail, which is included in your guys' package. And the thing that caught me the most on this letter, he starts citing aggravated menacing and assault, well, Mr. Keith was yelling at this guy that parked in his yard with this, uh, lowboy, he was spitting, but it was spraying, okay, slobbering all over this guy, I mean, he wasn't "tch, tch" in his face, he was just spraying when he was talking, that's not really a criminal charge, and as far as aggravated menacing, there's no weapons involved, and Mr. Goodman's an attorney, he should know that, that's not aggravated menacing, it's just menacing. So then he puts on the back here, on the second page, that, please keep me apprised of the measures you are taking regarding this situation, which they were already advised the day of the incident, including when the charges are filed and when a no contact protection order is in place from the court. I don't do either one of those, that's not my job. I did what I did, I explained to him that they had to get the reports, did the reports, they're in here too, and I told him to come get a copy of them and go right down to the prosecutor's office and see what you can do, but if you need me here, that day, I told him twice, you need me here, I'll come, I don't, I don't have a problem sitting here, I'll just have the other guy run the calls. So, that's where we're at, but if, if you need a letter from me, I will be happy to give you guys one stating that, you know, I will be there whenever they plan on doing whatever they're doing, or one of my guys will be there, if you need that, just let me know, and I'll definitely type one out for you. I'll go in there today and type it out as soon as we get back and run it back up here.
I, I don't know, really, that's a, that's a separate, elected office holder that runs that, he's in charge of his employees, he's, he has one to handle, his staff, uh, he does say in the letter here that he said the property owners, he's anxious to complete the project, I gotta take him to his word that he wants to finish it, um, it seems like the matters that are here went through the proper chain of command, if he doesn't like the decision of the prosecutor, doesn't like the decision of, of you and your, and your officers...
He didn't, he didn't answer.
I, I don't know, we're kind of at a standstill a little bit, that we need to figure some way to work this out, um, for the good of all the parties. I don't fault any of the employees that were there that day, I mean, I, we've dealt with unsafe work environments in this office, and I've made that same call to send people home, and, and tomorrow too, I believe, uh, in HR, but, you know, we don't wanna tolerate that for any employees, and if this was an incident, which I'm sure it was, it seems like things were diffused at the moment, when tempers de-escalated, and, kinda like a bully, you had a bully, you don't not go to school over again, you find a different route to school, or you deal with it directly, and then the bully...
Well, Rick was told to stay away, so I, so I know Rick, yeah, I've known Rick for thirty years, that doesn't matter, 'cause I don't hang out with Rick, we're not buddies, I just know him through law enforcement, he was a, a bondsman, I knew him back in the eighties, and that was what, I think, was the biggest problem, is I kept saying to Randy, you don't know Rick, you don't, you don't know him, I mean, the guy's been around for...
He, he knows him, he told him on the phone, asked around, you know who he is, he had a sleep pressure, he had a...
At first he told me no, but then he just didn't say anything.
History and stuff here, so clearly he knows him and of him and who he is, and Jeff Goodman, of course, knows him extremely well, from being a bail bondsman and did cases with their law firm before...
Well, that, that's one thing I wanted to say, that when, as soon as I got out of the car, they, they started saying about, this guy got a domestic, this guy got a domestic. Oh, okay, so what, he got a domestic? I don't know anything about his domestic, it's not like I got Rick Keaton on feedout, hey, what's this domestic about? I don't know, that doesn't mean that was what was going on that day, and I think they were trying to say that, because they were saying what a violent guy he was. He could be a loudmouth, I agree with that, but I've never known him to just attack people like Mr. Goodman said on the, uh, like, the, uh, last week or two weeks ago, so, I offered him to stay there, that's what I don't understand, it's not like Rick's gonna come over there, because I will cuff him and throw him in my car if I have to, but I told him to stay there. So this is just absurd to me, that I'm standing here explaining what I had to do, and then absurd that Mr. Goodman would sit up there and lambaste me in front of everybody, yeah, I didn't respond to you, you're right, I did, I don't owe you nothing, I don't owe you a thing, and with what he's saying, that I will file charges and I will, you're not my boss. I handled it the way I would handle any call like it, that's how we do things. They didn't like the result, that's all, that, that's the bottom line, they had, they did not like the results, I should've went over and threw Rick Keaton on the ground and shot him with the pazer a couple times and cuffed him up, and, you know, then they would've been happy, but it didn't happen the way they wanted it to happen, so I did not, which is a lie.
At the end of the day, the incident is over, and we're willing to, you're willing to commit to be there, the sheriff, we were willing to commit sheriff's deputies to be there, I mean, right now, the, 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 the eye on the prize needs to be finishing my throat, the city needs to...
The citizens of Warren Township...
Because now, what's about the kids on school buses?
The citizens of Warren Township, Braceville Township, any, any resident that drives those roads, the, the kids going to school, the bus drivers, you know, like I said, superintendent called me, and with a legitimate safety issue, what he called me.
The house that they talked about is at the end of the road, it's at Anderson and Eagle Creek, once, if you're heading up towards Park, when your left side's not done, but the right side is, which is our side, so if the guy's going down in the school bus and you got some snow on there, and he comes up to that point, he could slide, you know what I'm saying, 'cause the bus will slide right off that hump, who knows what's gonna happen? If there's a car turning at that particular time and he clips it, you got kids on there, that's the biggest thing that needs to be done, because...
What was, what was the gentleman's big beef, Mr. Keith, when you interviewed him? What, what was his big complaint?
The day, the day before, this is when this all started, Rick said that, he came to the station, talked to Dan, Sergeant Peterson, and then he come in, Sergeant Peterson said, oh, I better not talk to him. When you were going down the road, you go into a curve and come up to Anderson Anthony, Rick Keaton pulled out of the driveway, started headed towards, uh, uh, on Eagle Creek, I'm sorry, Eagle Creek, so he headed towards, uh, Leaven, and when he went out to go around the trucks, some, some lady come down at forty miles an hour, there's no signs posted at all on either side of the trucks, no sign, road work ahead, no sign, nothing, you know, something that makes somebody go, oh, I better slow down a little bit, so she almost crashed her head on with them, it excites her, which probably would anybody, but, so he told us about it, I went down and pulled down Anderson Anthony where they were paving, I said, listen, guys, there's been a complaint, can you guys take care of putting some road signs up for them trucks that are in the roadway, 'cause they were in the road, can you let them know what four ways on something, to let them know that there's something going on, you know, further down the road, saying, you know, slow down? Yeah, sure, sure, they never did it, they didn't even do it. And that's what started the whole thing.
So you got upset about that, and then the drive-in, yourself?
Yeah, and then the truck, the truck was in the yard, in his yard, smashing it all down with that lowboy, and he got upset about that and started going off on them guys. And he says, he swears he never said he was gonna kill them, and there's the point where I'm saying, let's say that all of us out here, all of us are working together, and you come and start something, we don't like it, so we, oh, he, he, he spit on, entered a curve, and then everybody, oh, yeah, yeah, he, I'm supposed to believe that, even though it's false...
I don't want to put any words in anyone's mouth, I wasn't there, he was there, that's something...
You, you can't, I cannot arrest you for something that they're saying, I just witnessed, it's a misdemeanor.
Right, right.
So I have to do the report like I explained to them, and then they can come and get a copy, go talk to the prosecutor, if they feel that they warrant charges, then go charge them, I'll arrest Rick, I don't care. But that's, if you need something to write, let me know, please, and I'll write it up and...
I, I don't, I don't know that we do, I just hope, again, I completely, I, I did call Engineer Smith, I heard the stuff that you said, that he said he did say, to me too, he dug in on the safety issue thing, and I totally understand that, um, Goodman, what I don't understand is them saying they never heard from anyone there, it's been days, we never heard from anybody, you clearly said you reached out to him and talked to him personally, um...
The day of you...
Commissioner Yoho told me the same thing, they had a special meeting, and then reached out and said, hey, we had a meeting, prosecutor said no charges, but we will provide police service in any cost overrun, if we need to, you know, the township just wants this done, we wanna work with you, no reply back from that, and then it started with the letters from the attorney, and, and that's kinda where it sits, yes, we got an email yesterday, basically from the engineer's office stating they've turned it over to the attorney, uh, to Mr. Goodman, and they'll wait to see what he advises them to do. Um, so that's kinda where it stands right now, and, you know, it does sound like, you know, if he works for you and he works for them, I don't know how you handle that, but, uh...
Well, that's, that's basically one of the reasons I didn't reply, is because I was told by the attorney, so...
Yeah, I, I don't know, that's the township thing there, but...
I was told by our township attorney not to do a statement to him at all, but I have...
I think on behalf of all the residents, I can speak, we just, we just want the job finished, and...
Yeah, I agree with you, and that's what I'm saying.
And if we could provide the requisite safety out there, you can provide the requisite safety.
Right.
There should be no, the incident is a separate matter, looking at it now, what's the safety issue? If it's, if it's, if it's de-escalated and you're there to make sure that everyone's safe, let's get it done, in my opinion.
A hundred percent. So if you need anything, just let me know, or have...
But we're not the, the highway engineer, we're separately elected, so...
Right.
If someone from his office can get ahold of us, I'll give you my cell phone number if you wanna write it down in the bag, right inside the folder, three, three, zero, four, forty-eight, zero, four. Three, three, zero, four, forty-eight, zero, four.
Well, I think we can reach out in some sense, or, you know, I'm sure it's a public meeting, you can hear the meeting, you can listen.
I mean, I've known the guy for years, you know what I'm saying? It's not like we weren't friends.
It's a communication type thing, it sounds like, just needs to be rectified. It's gotten, gotten blown up for many reasons, maybe a lot of them outside of your control, outside of his control. Hopefully, we can just come to a, a resolution and he gets, and finish the job and move forward.
Well, I apologize to all of you for being here, but anything they need, let me know, I'll do whatever I gotta do.
This is what they apologize, just, I mean, we're looking for some way to get this done very soon because I think I know how I'm gonna feel an accident cruiser, that's all. So it, it's something that can't be put in the back burner. And the safety of their employees over there in the county, I understand all that. But the thing is, is he offered that day and we've been offering protection. One of the reason purpose that we came here is because we're listening to last week's meeting and it was like, he's not doing anything and we're not doing anything, and that's not completely against. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Steve, I'm sorry you had to go through that, I'm sorry you had to be there that day and deal with whatever went on that day.
That's okay, I was just there one of the days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it wasn't an easy situation for you, so don't take any of this conversation here as anything towards you at all, you, you were unfortunate, uh, victim in a sense here to be in there that day. And we appreciate you. Okay, let's, uh, start with our agenda. We have, uh, number one, dispense with reading in a minute. Number two, approve the bills. Uh, and let's get to number three, transfer monies.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um, on the transfer of the monies, it's, this is paying actually the county, uh, from what's left over of a grant for grant administration, so it's transferring it into the general fund. And I'll go ahead and move to the next one, number four, additional appropriations. Um, family, uh, and children's first council is, um, to increase needed in, uh, social services account. Uh, the auditor's office, there's two there, one is, uh, for our online dog licensing that was approved, um, not too long ago. And then another was an additional appropriation, uh, for the renewal of the yearly Cisco support contracts for the county. The transfer appropriations, I'm gonna do ours and I will let, uh, all, the rest other than the sanitary engineers, and I'll let Bob do that. Um, family and children's first council is very, it's to fix over budget, various accounts. Um, increase needed for mid-year salary increase, um, in travel, increase in travel and training and stipends. Um, mental health board is, and again, just to remind you on these appropriations, these are all within a fund. There's no transferring from fund to fund, it's just line items. Um, for community mental health board, um, it is, uh, various accounts, increase needed for increase in shredded and recycling, buildings and computer services. I'm skipping over the sanitary engineers, clerk of courts for fifteen hundred is an increase needed for equipment maintenance. Um, planning commission is two hundred and that's adding to the mileage GL line was at.
General ledger.
General ledger line, thank you.
May I speak?
I will let Bob do his.
Bob Marano, sanitary engineers, um, we have five transfers this week. The first one is for seven hundred and seventy dollars. That's additional monies for our court reporter from the Elmer, um, improvement public meeting. The thirty thousand is for additional limestone slag and gravel for our metro sewer district for sewer repairs. Uh, we have fifteen thousand dollars for an increase in electric bills from Ohio Edison and that covers, we have fifty different, um, Ohio Edison accounts. That should get us through the rest of the year. Um, we're transferring twenty-five thousand dollars for our Mosquito Creek wastewater treatment plant and that is for additional chemicals and polymer. And, uh, we're transferring two thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars to purchase a mission control unit for our heat and shoot project. And then our county employees are gonna install the mission.
Thank you, thank you both, all three of you. Number six, adopt a resolution approving the list label as July twenty-three, then and now, of purchase orders of the various vendors to be known as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C fifty-seven oh five dot forty-one D, as recommended by the auditor.
All right, I'm going, uh, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I'm gonna let Chris Sustaric, our senior accountant, address this one for you.
As part of our twenty-two financial audit, we had some is- or some transactions that were brought to our attention during the testing, is, um, outstanding encumbrance testing, but it's testing that they do in January and February to see if, um, our transactions were reported correctly as on the twenty-two financial statement or as an account payable for twenty-three. They noticed some areas where we had our invoices, invoice dates preceding our purchase order date. And according to our higher vice code fifty-seven oh five forty-one D, that can't happen, we're supposed to encumber prior to. So I asked the account payable department to kinda look into that and add that to their, um, review when they're, um, reviewing and posting our accounts payable. And this is a list of all the ones that they came up with in July twenty-twenty-three that had invoice dates preceding the purchase, purchase order date. But according to fifty-seven oh five forty-one D, of their revised code, there are exceptions to this. Now, under a certain dollar amount, the fiscal officer or county auditor can approve those. But over a certain dollar amount, which I believe is a thousand dollars, um, it has to be approved by the legislative authority, which is the commissioners, so that's why we're bringing this to your attention. Uh, now this list is long, we have sent an email out to all of the departments explaining the situation, what we're looking at now, what they need to be doing, uh, some options that they could use so that this doesn't happen in the future. And we are working with departments personally, if you got this correct. But in the meantime, we do need to have these approved of what is called then and now certificates, which basically means that then at the time that we entered into the liability, uh, when that invoice was generated, we have the money and that now at the time that we're approving it, we still have the money to pay that.
Right, thank you.
And were some of those, um, recurring expenses as well, which?
A lot of them, were recurring monthly payments with those departments that have those, uh, payments. They're doing a purchase order at the beginning of each month. Uh, uh, July, it looks like they did them a little bit later, so there's like a day difference between the invoice and the purchase order, but that does, you know, is a flag for the state auditor. So we are looking to do blanket purchase orders with them where they just do a certificate at the beginning of the year for the full amount of the year and they don't have to keep worrying about that every month. That is one of the, um, options for these. Uh, but a lot of them were recurring months, uh, recurring monthly payments to recurring vendors.
Sure, the state auditor would be happy with this, overall.
Yeah, we're trying to shape it up a bit.
Very good, thank you.
We have had some departments reach out to us too in the past, that their department has gotten a little lax with this and that, you know, what are we doing at our office to, to this? So it is, it is known as the department, you know. We're gonna get it fixed.
Very good. Okay, and number seven, to remove from table item number eight, commissioner's meeting agenda dated August ninth, to adopt the resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission and authorize the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, county year twenty-four. And it looks like number eight, it was with it to adopt the resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission on August twenty-first and authorize the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the auditor. So this is just updating.
Yeah, I'll address it, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. So, I asked for that original resolution to be pulled because when I reviewed that resolution, um, I, and I studied it a little bit and then later after I had it pulled, I consulted with Attorney Danzo from the prosecutor's office. Um, what had happened in the past is, um, those rates had just been signed off by the auditor and then they would do the resolution. But because the actual resolution, which, uh, the language comes from the, um, Ohio revised code, correct? Or, so because that resolution actually states that it's determined by the budget commission and not the auditor, we decided that we better pass it through the bud- bu- uh, budget commission prior to the commissioners doing so. So it was a situation where I wanted to make sure the process was followed appropriately and according to the Ohio revised code.
And number nine, grant permission to close the roads, Newton Falls-Braceville Road for the Braceville Alumni Family Fun Day, Sunday, September seventeenth, from noon to five. And then educational highway for Hero Race, uh, September tenth, uh, between Forty-five and Champion Avenue. And that's from nine until eleven.
Commissioners, it's, you're very, I, those are self-explanatory, if you have questions on those employers for those events.
Not a problem at all. Then number ten, special annual fleet permit, Lake Erie Golf Cars and Thomas Cunningham, uh, DBA Nine Oaks Farm Cunningham Farm Drainage.
These are just two annual supplier permits. Lake Erie Golf Cars is a renewal and, uh, Thomas Cunningham is a new permit.
Thank you again.
And also, kinda go back to what Warren Township was saying, I do believe the engineer's on the phone if you comment on that at some point.
Sure, absolutely, I've, um, Engineer Smith, have you, uh, hear us? Go ahead and hit star six and unmute yourself.
Good morning, commissioners, can you hear me?
We hear you perfectly fine, Randy, thanks for calling in.
Thank you. No worries, um, just in response to, uh, Anderson Anthony Road, we have, uh, worked it out with the, uh, Braceville Township Administration. Their chief of police is actually gonna be out there when we finish the paving of the road. Uh, that's gonna be coordinated through, uh, the chief personally out there and it'll be him or one of his deputies, uh, that are assisting in that. So, we're gonna look, he had some, uh, specific, uh, dates that, you know, he wanted to try and coordinate with us. So we're gonna look at the weather forecast and once he has the availability, then we'll get out there and get that section of road finished. Uh, obviously, you know, we have a bit of a disagreement with what is being said and what actually occurred out there at the site and that's neither here nor there for today. But, uh, with regards to Trustee Anthony, you know, obviously it seems that, I checked with our staff here and we haven't had any phone issues. And he's been to our office probably, no, a couple dozen times over the years, so he certainly knows where we're located at and if he has an issue, he could certainly just stop by. Uh, Warren Township Police actually gets their gas from this office and the same thing that would go for the chief. If he was a question and actually wanted to talk to me, all he had to do was come to the front office and, uh, ask to see me. So I'm a little surprised at those challenges, uh, for what it's worth.
Did you, did you talk to him, Randy? He said he talked to you on the scene personally, face to face.
Oh, that is correct and obviously we have a bit of a disagreement because the only thing I got from the chief was when he was sitting in his car, he kept saying, do you know who this is? Um, no, well, how long have you been with the county? Twenty years, you know, you don't know who this is? No, I don't know who it is, and he drove off. Uh, and that was the extent of it. The decision was made to shut the project down as soon as I had the phone call that there was an episode. That didn't occur out there at the site. Uh, the crew was already shutting down for the day. The truck had gone in the ditch, it wasn't on Mr. Keith's property. There's a lot of other parts of this story. This was the second day, I was already gonna contact the sheriff once I read our incident reports. The chief never interviewed the remaining employees, I seen those reports to see what was said. So, right now, there's not a lot of confidence from the staff here, uh, as far as, you know, what the Warren Township Police Chief is saying and what he's gonna do. So, and that's a bit of a problem because I'm not gonna be able to convince the union to, you know, uh, build their confidence in the chief after what occurred out there.
You didn't hear or receive any calls from Trustee Yoho or Trustee Anthony?
I did not, I actually talked to Trustee Kay Anderson on two or three occasions. Um, she was trying to find out for me exactly who we were dealing with. I ran into Trustee Yoho over the weekend, actually, the first time I had talked to him about it. And, uh, I have not talked to Trustee Anthony, period. And I know he has my cell phone number and obviously he knows where I'm at here at the office.
Well, I guess the good thing is, did you have a, any ballpark timeframe when you think that we can reply back at least, so we can return our call back to the superintendent and to, to give them at least a heads up of a timeframe, a week, two weeks, month? Do you have any, any idea?
I, I would think, I would think two to three weeks would be fair. Obvi- obviously, it's weather dependent and some of it is being coordinated with the Braceville Township Chief. Uh, the other thing I would like to point out is we were actually at the Warren Township meeting, um, oh, approximately a week ago and the discussion on Anderson Anthony never came up during the meeting. I had two staff members there, so when it was talked about that it was discussed at their public meeting, obviously it was not, um, for what it was worth. And the only thing I truly need from Warren Township at this point in time is the commitment because, uh, there was a, about nineteen hundred and eighty dollars, I can give you the exact amount. I know they said they would be willing to, uh, pay that cost for the remobilization and so forth. Um, that's the only thing I would need from them in writing to move forward.
Okay, are they supposed to deal with you or Jeff Goodman?
Uh, makes no difference to me, um.
Yeah, if you heard the chief and the trustee, they thought it was a conflict of interest to deal with Jeff because they retain him also.
I, I don't exactly know what that, you know, the conflict would be up to the attorney to determine what the conflict is, not up to the township to decide and, you know, I'll leave that up to Attorney Goodman because Attorney Goodman is not representing this office, you know, from a legal standpoint.
We did at the commissioners' meeting, he did address the, the meeting directly to me. So, I, he, yeah, he was clearly happy.
He did, and he also told you that he is not legal counsel for the engineer's office. He deals with the personnel-related issues and obviously this is a personnel-related issue.
Well, it sounds like it's on, on the road to getting worked out. I wish you luck with finishing up the, whatever you needed from them or, or, um, the nineteen eighty or whatever it is, letter or whatever. It doesn't sound to me like they were kind of in agreement with that, but hopefully that's just a semantics thing that you guys can work through and, um.
Well, I'm kinda counting on you, Commissioner, to help me work through this because if, uh, we're challenged with communicating and establishing conversations over the phone, uh, here at the engineer's office, they readily seem to be available to talk to you. So I would simply request, uh, if you could do me that favor is to reach out to Warren Township, uh, either the chief or trustee, uh, Anthony and say, you need to send in that letter that you're paying the difference for the mobilization time, which is just under two thousand dollars, then that'll help get the project moving forward even more quickly perhaps. And if they supposedly have already approved that in a meeting, then that should be very simple to accomplish, I would like to think.
Well, they, they did say, Yoho did tell me they had a special meeting and they said that they were open to meeting whatever cost they needed to do to get the job done. That, that's how it was related to me. So, and he, he didn't include police protection in that, um, that statement.
Yeah, and we don't even need, we're not even requesting the police protection. I, uh, would certainly compliment the sheriff, he came out there that day, but they recognized that Warren Township wanted to maintain jurisdiction, uh, over the matter and obviously that'll remain a question in my mind now for, oh, a long period of time as to, uh, why they did wanna maintain jurisdiction if they knew Mr. Keith owes so well.
Randy, maybe just send him a bill too, you know, for that two thousand dollars or nineteen hundred dollars.
I, I don't wanna have to chase it, there's too many opinions here and who said what and who did what. If they're committed to, to pay it, which, you know, yeah, that doesn't mean they'll pay it.
It doesn't mean they'll pay it either, but we don't wanna see the township or the residents.
I mean, that's what you're covering yourself.
Right, we don't want to see towns or residents held hostage either over administrative stuff, you know, that, that needs worked out, of course, but that's, that, it's not gonna affect the school buses or the kids or anything else. I mean, we just, yeah, I hope that's not a sticking point, I hope that's something you guys can work out through legal means. Um, and in, in the next two to three weeks, we got a road that's paved and the bus drivers are happy and the parents are happy and everyone that received that letter from you is happy.
Well, maybe I misunderstood now, Commissioner, just so I'm clear on this. I thought that they had a meeting, Warren Township, and they were willing to pay and provide security. We're not asking for any security from Warren Township. Braceville is gonna, uh, provide that because it is in Braceville Township. But the question becomes, is Warren Township gonna pay the difference? Because the rest of the taxpayers of Trumbull County shouldn't have to burden that cost, in my opinion.
Right, I understand and they, they said that they were willing.
So can you reach out, I'm asking you to do me a favor here, if you would, Commissioner. Would you be willing to reach out to, uh, trustee Yoho and/or trustee Anthony since they've been, you know, so willing to talk to you? But they, you know, they caught me over the weekend and confirmed that they're gonna pay the bill, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd be willing and, and they're on the road there somewhere, maybe as they're listening to this on the radio or whatever, maybe they could swing in right now on their way home, you know, or sort of.
I'm at the office right now, as a matter of fact, so they can certainly. I'm at the office right now, as a matter of fact, so they can certainly feel free to do so.
Well, if you felt okay with that, and you were open, open to that, you know, I would ask Trustee Anthony and the Chief on their way home, stop in, work it out like men, and come to an agreement. Let's get the job done and move forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your assistance.
And I will, I will make a phone call when we get done with this meeting also, to ask the same thing of them, that now the cooler heads are prevailing all the way around, and things are kind of outside of our, out of our scope. We can at least assure the public that, as a county, we're going to finish everything that we need to do. And I, and hopefully, too, this doesn't affect future relations with the whole township over an incident with one guy who doesn't even reside in that township.
Well, I don't know about the cooler heads. You know, it was a two, two-day occurrence with the same individual that does have a history, good, bad, or indifferent. We did not know the history that those two days, so I'm not even sure where those comments are coming from. That seems to be, you know, more of a story by half of the fact.
Yeah. Granted, the first day, they said nobody called the police, so they didn't know anything about it the first day. So, I mean, we had to...
That is very true. The reason why we did not call the police the first day, because the employees came in and they did the incident reports, and once I seen the incident reports, then the decision was made to contact the Sheriff. Before I was able to contact the Sheriff, the second incident occurred, when I got the phone call, and that's when I shut the crew down the second day in a row with the same individual, because the incident reports from the employees speak volumes. So, that's why, and if you had an opportunity and if you wanted to see him, we'd be certainly glad to share him about how Mr. Keith acted and reacted both days.
Randy, just to finish this up, and I appreciate you working with us with Warren Township, but just, just, in my opinion, I mean, obviously, we can intercede and do whatever, but I don't know if a township can pay a bill without receiving a bill. It's probably best to send them a bill.
Okay. No, we'll send the bill today. We already have it calculated.
I think that's probably the best thing to do.
Sure. I have no problem. It'll be sent today.
Thank you.
All right, Randy. Thank you for calling in. Thanks for clarifying, and we, you know, it sucks we even got to be involved in this at all. I mean, this is something that, the public meeting, they had a right to be here to express their views, I guess, and, and we've heard the sides with it, and not that that means anything. Either way, this probably all should have been, or I should say, I wish this all would have just been handled differently, but I, I understand the circumstances. They're outside of our control sometimes. But thank you for, thank you for addressing it.
No problem, but it probably would have been just as easy for them to make a left turn and come to my office rather than a right turn and go downtown, but they had to do what they seen fit. So, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eleven. Accept an award, the proposal submitted by Kohler Floor Covering to install BCT flooring in the Trumbull County Family Court Center, and the amount not to exceed seventy-five, seventy-one, fifty, and authorize Denny Molyneux President of the Board to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this agreement. This is on the action of request of Bill Hart, and we did have a backup bid that was like four thousand dollars more from Pro Flooring.
Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. Um, yeah, they came in the cheapest. My work supervisor reached out to five individuals, and only two had responded back with quotes. At the bottom of the note, Rich Owens, who is the Director of the Civil Rights Justice Center in the back, is reaching out for a capital improvement grant that he got last year as well. And if he gets that grant, it will return sixty percent of the dollar amount back into the general fund from that grant.
Okay.
The next one's mine. Do you want to give them your comment?
Yeah, let's take that to number twelve. Accept an award, the proposal submitted by Howland Company LLC to remove asbestos-type material from ductwork to Trumbull County Records Center and Planning Commission, and authorized me to execute the agreement. That's at the cost of ninety-eight, fifty, and we did have another bid of eleven thousand, one eighty, about three thousand dollar difference there.
Yes, sir. That's to remove some asbestos-type material around the ductwork and the HVAC unit at the one eighty-five East Market Street building. It will be contained and safe and ready to come Monday morning once we get the approval to remove it.
Were there other bids sought to, besides the two?
These are the two, the only ones I reached out for. I got two of these gentlemen off of our building inspectors, so. And the other ones, Howland did our green building, so they're right here in the neighborhood.
And number thirteen, to approve change order number one with the Conti Corporation, associated with the boiler and chiller replacement at the Trumbull County Family Court, and the amount of fifty-two hundred, revise the total contract amount to four hundred and twenty-three thousand, to be paid from ARPA fund and change orders. I don't know, provide labor and material to install Trumbull County-supplied shot feeders necessary to supply chemicals to the HVAC and cooling system.
That's just as it reads, Commissioners. It's a device that you fill it up, open the valve, and it self-feeds itself into the system to keep our HVAC corrosion-free on HVAC and cooling side.
Okay. Jim, does that add to our ARPA budget that we budgeted for that? Is that in addition to it, or we already got this covered?
It would be extra.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, yes. It adds that fifty-two hundred to, to that, and I'll update the sheet for next week, like I'm done for the BOE group from last week. But next week's sheet will reflect it.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, I mean, it's not a ton.
No, but it's, we want real fair numbers.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that, that we have that adjusted for next week, once it's approved. I wait until they're actually approved at the, at the Commissioners' meeting before I actually add it into the budget for it, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. My favorite one of this agenda item. To accept an award, the proposal submitted by Schindler Elevator Corporation to install two new elevators and controls in the Trumbull County Admin Building, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two fifty, and authorize Denny Molyneux President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute any and all documents. Wow. It is a, conditions of source-woke contract, so it isn't like we have much leverage here in shopping for elevator installers. Bill?
Commissioners, yes, they are source-woke State Contracting Company. They have existing contracts with us now in this elevator in our building. So, we have reached out to them for an upgrade on their equipment and our system, and they proposed us a number, and...
Okay. Number fifteen.
Commissioners, I also own the last two, if you don't go that far.
The last, you mean, the very end?
Last, so on the very end, yes, sir.
Okay. Let's skip ahead then to number twenty-seven. Authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor materials and equipment necessary for an incidental renovation of existing building for the roof replacement and asbestos removal to the Trumbull County Engineers Garage.
As it reads, we want to start advertising for a engineering build firm for the roof to get it started. So, with authorization today, we'll get us moving forward to advertise for the roof project.
Do you want?
To authorize the agenda item, so we could get it on the list to get it out to the public, yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm for it.
Oh, yeah.
And then twenty-five is also.
Twenty-five is the next one?
I'm sorry, twenty...
Twenty-eight. Authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor materials and equipment necessary for the incidentals for the renovation of the Trumbull County Stone Building.
That's the last of the buildings that needed upgrade that myself and Audrey Yoder discussed multiple times to get this building up and running, the new roof, AC controls, and the whole nine yards. So, this also starts the process to getting this building finished.
I have no problem with that.
No.
And then, do we need these on the agenda again for tomorrow officially, first?
Yes, they're on, they're on it.
Okay. And let's go back then to number fifteen. To rescind the journal action dated July twelfth to authorize the sub-grant agreement between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Workforce Development Board, Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for the period of July one through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The agreement establishes terms, conditions, and requirements governing the admin and use of allocated funds for workforce development activities in the local area from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. State of Ohio has modified said sub-grant agreement. It requires a new sub-grant agreement to be signed.
Dimitri Leogus, Workforce Development. This agenda item, the state had made some errors in the original grant and some modifications to it. So, we're asking to rescind that one, and then to move forward to item sixteen is, the new sub-grant agreement modified has been submitted, and our board staff has signed off on it. We're just, we're requesting that the Commissioners sign off on it as well. It's Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds. It's the federal grant that comes down from the government for all the workforce activities at the Ohio Means Jobs Center. So, that's training individuals, on-the-job training programs, the actual operation of the Ohio Means Jobs Center. That is our, our grant. It's six, seven million dollars, issued biannually, so every biannual time period, we have to sign a new sub-grant agreement. So, it comes from the federal to the state, and then from the state to the local government. So, this, this signs off for a two-year allocation of funds to operate the Ohio Means Jobs Center.
Right.
Okay. And then the seventeen is mine as well, to approve the amended bylaws annually. Our Workforce Development Board Subcommittee reviews the bylaws of the, of the Workforce Board and makes any recommendations to improve. We haven't had any major laws coming down from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act from the federal level, so really, the only changes have been really grammatical for us. And as you could see below, you could see all the different minor changes that are being made to the Workforce Board bylaws for us for the, for the upcoming year.
Okay. Very well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eighteen. Authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for inmate food service management consulting service to provide product for meals, menu, and food prep consulting for the Trumbull County Adult Justice Center. For recommendation to the Sheriff, Major Mason?
That's Dan Mason, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. Our current contract with Trinity Group, which is paraphrably, expires this year. We're presently working on an extended contract. The current contract does allow for two additional subsequent contracts, however, because there was an emergency change to the provisions, it was authorized by the Prosecutor's Office. Prosecutor's Office has recommended that lots of bids opposed to dramatic renewals.
Very good. Thank you, Major. Number nineteen. Authorize a settlement agreement in the case of expressed underground Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas, case number twenty-two three, CB ten eighty-four, and authorize the Commissioners to execute the document, and we will pay thirty-five thousand. This was something earlier, there was the extra pipe that was put out there that wasn't authorized as a change order, and then they billed us a little more than seventy thousand, I think it was? It was fifty-four. Fifty-four? Yes. And then we, we had a meeting, and actually, we were able to get them to drop the case against us and then settle for the thirty-five thousand, which we agreed to pay for the work that was done. So, the pipe is there. It is something that will be beneficial. Someday, just, they got the cart before the horse, and you did not sign off on it and brought it to the attention that, hey, we're not paying this. But Commissioner Ken Lacy and myself discussed in public and, and meet different meetings that we want to be a good neighbor. They did do the work. We could technically go to court and say, "You're bad. You screwed up," and eat the cost. But we felt it was in the best interest of the county and the citizens. They're going to benefit from this to at least pay the materials cost of what they did, and that's where it was negotiated. And also with this, I want to thank the Prosecutor's Office, and I want to thank your counsel in the San Therry Engineers' Office, Matt Blair, for getting involved in this. And he approached the other attorney for the plaintiff on this, and they were able to work a deal out in one phone call, I believe, and they got it worked out. But we appreciate Matt getting involved in that and saving us, you know, potentially, the, the risk, or at least of an extra twenty-some thousand dollars or more. Yes, yes, Commissioner. As you mentioned before, we were, we had already approved the engineering to go ahead and extend that line to the extra nine hundred, nine hundred and some feet. And I requested that the, the Fulton Engineering and the contractor get the paperwork together to me for a change order to be put on the agenda. And during my request, in order to get that proper paperwork so we could put in a change order, I find out that the line was already put in. So, so that's what the problem was here. We, I, I wanted to put it in. I was going to propose it to the Commissioners to put in the extra, but it was put in before we actually did the paperwork. And it would have cost us fifty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
And now, we got it for thirty-five.
And, and we did see the paperwork, where clearly, you did not sign off on it. You were bringing it to our attention for a change order.
Yes.
You caught it, and unfortunately, when they were in there doing the work, lines got crossed with their workers, their people, and they figured, while they're in there, just do it. They did it in anticipation that we probably would have accepted the change order.
Right.
For something of that. But by them doing it first, you know, that's their bad. They got to follow policy like everybody else does and follow the law, which they did not. And we probably, as our counsel told us, we have a winnable case in court with us, very assuredly.
Right.
But we don't want to screw a vendor just because of the technicality. We want to make sure we cover their costs on it. It's something that we would have probably approved if they'd have done it the right way.
Yes.
And a lesson learned by this company, we can move forward with them and not have any hard feelings or, or not be, you know, I don't want to win on a technicality over a business that has mouths to feed and families to feed and, you know, they're employing people. So, Commissioner Ken Lacy was in agreement with me on that, too, that we're not out to screw any vendors out there. We just want fairness, and, and that was able to work out a fair deal for everybody. So, it worked out good.
Well, and I, and I think people would say, "Well, why didn't you challenge it, take it all the way to court?" Even, you know, there's no guarantees in court when you, when you go to court.
Right.
You could talk about lawyers, but, you know, attorney fees. You could talk about a negative judgment. So, essentially, Gary's right. We got what we really would have wanted that would have cost us fifty-four thousand dollars for thirty-five thousand dollars. So, it ended up being a win-win, and it's going to benefit the project and the, and the residents in the area, so.
Well, they're already connected out there, so it's already benefited them.
Right. That's, that's it. Exactly. That's what I mean.
And if we went to court, there would have been a winner and loser. And if we won, we really didn't win. We just screwed somebody over on work that they did. And if we'd have lost, you know, we would have paid more than...
Right. Yes.
You know, we, we had to kind of teach a lesson. You got to follow the rules a little bit here on this one. But good job catching it, and the way everything went down was, was beautiful.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Number twenty. Accept a change in job status of Maggie Powell from a full-time position as telecommunicator to a part-time position as telecommunicator with Trumbull County nine-one-one, and to accept the resignation of Samantha Walker from a position as telecommunicator with nine-one-one. So, we lost an employee, and then we, who was in training, and then we lost a good employee that went to a different department, but she still has offered to stay on in a part-time capacity, which we need employees at nine-one-one in the worst way. So, I'm thankful that she's going to stay on and at least fill some of the voids. I don't know how much she's going to be able to do with this other job, but every other warm body we have there is going to help in that department right now, because they are still in dire straits. We got a great director. We got potential of a new building over the last week, and we need employees. So, and we are hiring now. This is a position right now, that there are postings online. If you wanted to get in a telecommunicator thing, if you're in the safety services, if you have a high stress tolerance and you like working under pressure, but feeling rewarded of saving people and helping people, you think this might be the job for you, please go to the county website or Indeed or any of these places and, and apply, because we need employees now. Okay. Number twenty-two. Request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners authorize renewal of the attached citizen participation policy for PY twenty twenty-three. The citizen participation policy is a required element of the county's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. Policy takes effect September one, program year twenty-three, and extends to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The citizen participation policy is, the annual policy is reviewed, revised, and renewed each year. Should make from Planning Commission. Read through this. It's pretty self-explanatory here. Read through this. It's pretty self-explanatory here. And I will be seeing Julie later today, so if I have questions, I'll ask her after my meeting with her. Okay, number twenty-three. To update the Trumbull County Sanitary Sewer Rules and Regulations, to show the new Ohio EPA approved pretreatment local limits for the Mosquito Creek District and the Brookfield District as listed.
All right. Commissioners, EPA, they have reset their limits on pretreatment requirements. And our sanitary rules and regulations, we need to make the proper adjustments to reflect the new standards.
Anything big there jump out at you that's going to be hard to see?
This is, the burden on this is to the, those industrial customers of ours who have to pre-treat before they can release it into the sewers. Oh, I don't see anything jumping out of the page here that's going to cause too much hardship on our industrial customers. They should be able to attain these standards.
Okay. Very good. And with every EPA move, it costs money for somebody. Some of them have to spend more money to treat. We're going to have to spend more money to monitor. You know, that's outside of our control.
Yes.
Twenty-four. To adopt the resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, County Project Five S eighteen for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District. And as a note, Thursday, October twelfth at seven is the fixed, as the time in Yankee Lake Ballroom is the place of the hearing of objections to or acceptance of the county project number five S eighteen to the tentative capital charges or to the project scope and boundaries to the same as outlined in the resolution. So, anyone that's affected in that can show up at Yankee Lake, the meeting starts at seven, and express their views. We'll do it kind of like we did the water line in Visetta.
Yes.
Where you'll give your presentation on what it is. And then we will hear from the yays and nays and any input that they have. And then, is this something again that you think about? Is there a percentage like the water line thing or?
Well, since this is a, yeah, this is a capital charge proj- project and not an assessment project. So, basically, we'll take the number of connections and that's how you weigh it. If we have, I think out here we have fifty-eight connections. If we get, what would it be? Twenty-nine would be a tie. Thirty would be more in favor than opposed. But Commissioner, that is not a written in stone legal requirement or anything. You are, with the county, we just use that to gauge, you know, the support for the project itself. But the commissioners have the overall authority to go ahead and construct a sewer line.
Well, this is huge because of, when you look at the county as a whole and you look at the rural areas and you look at the stretches of things, for Yankee Lake to be getting sewer, for Yankee Lake fifty-eight residents, whatever they have there.
Yes.
This is a big deal.
Yes, yes.
If I lived in Yankee Lake, I'd be ecstatic about this, that they were considered in the unique part of our county. It's a historical part of our county. And I'm glad to see we're able to do this.
Right, right.
Twenty-five. To acknowledge receipt of an executed warranty deed from the Board of Trustees of Warren Township to the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners for the transfer property for the purpose of constructing a packaged wastewater treatment plant to provide sanitary sewer treatment for over seven hundred properties in Warren Township as part of Trumbull County's Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. I had trustee Anthony here for this one. He probably would have done a cartwheel.
All right. Well, I, I mentioned this to him before the meeting, let him know that it was on for this week. But they have executed the warranty deed with us and we just need to record it. And this resolution, the board, just the formality to acknowledge that we did receive the property for the package plant for this project. And our, myself, Matt Blair, were excited that we were able to get this taken care of.
I'm sure all the residents and trustees in Warren Township are, are your excitement.
Right. And that also helps us for the next item on item twenty-six.
Okay. To adopt the resolution authorizing Denny Moye President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to nominate, apply for, accept and enter in a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the county of Trumbull for planning, design and/or construction of the following projects. West Road Avenue Sanitary Sewer, Sterling Drive Package and Mecca Package Nutrient Reduction, Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer, State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement, Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement, Pendleton Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Improvements, South Hen Hyde Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement, State Route forty-six Saddle Brook Sanitary Sewer Improvements. That's freaking awesome. I mean.
All right. Well, Commissioners, the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, they're always our anchor funding agency for all these projects. We're always able to get at least zero percent loan money for the projects. We anchor it with this and then that's when you come in and try to reduce each of these loans with the various grants. And they also award principal forgiveness. And last year, we got principal forgiveness for the Yankee Lake Project of over a million dollars. And we are only putting this in here as a fail safe, to re-nominate it for next year in the event that we don't get a contract awarded by, in November for that project. But I don't see us having any problem getting a contract awarded for that Yankee Lake project. But we just sort of put it in here as a fail safe, which means that our big target for this round is this Meadowbrook Project. It's eligible for up to four million dollars of principal forgiveness through this program. And that is, that's pretty much the targeted project when it comes to the principal forgiveness. We, we need that four million dollars to make this project happen. Last year, I nominated it. It finished eighth in the state. The only reason it didn't get full points was because we didn't have the P T I in hand. Now we have the P T I in hand. It should max out the points. It should score number one in the state. And that's what I'm looking forward to. I, I, we need this four million dollars in that principal forgiveness. The other ones, they came up with a new rule last year that they're only going to award principal forgiveness to one project per government entity. So, where I, I will let them know Meadowbrook is the one we want with principal forgiveness. Not that the other projects aren't important. The Meadowbrook is the one with four million.
Consent decree project, very challenging. We knew it was going to be. And let's hope we get it.
Yeah, low to moderate income area.
Right.
Consent decree, having to build our own package plant out there. I mean, this is a tough project. We need this money.
Gary, you get a star at the top of your paper for this workshop. All right. Well, thank you, Commissioner. We're going to save that seat for you next week and have a little sign reserved for Gary Newbrow. Okay, that completes all of the agenda items that we know of. And for the good of Trumbull County, any of the department heads have anything that they want to bring up first? Okay, and yes, sir, Mr. Hart.
Trumbull County Billy Maynard. The fair had a water line break during the fair. It was in the yard. I'm asking permission to move forward to repair that water line with the adding construction company that's already there doing the parking lot project. It's anywhere between four to eight thousand dollars, depending on how much pipe they actually have to replace down there. So, with that approval, then I can move forward to getting that water line fixed.
All right. Well, that water line you mentioned to me before, it is on your side of the meter, right?
It's in the, it's in the third ground.
Okay.
It's up in the third ground. It's up by the office.
Okay.
All right. And I just, for the good, I just got a message from trustee Anthony. He said the chief is on his way to meet with the engineer now.
Great.
So.
Wonderful.
Hopefully, it's a nice, peaceful, productive meeting. Then go to lunch afterward. Share story pictures from their Labor Day weekend with each other. Update each other on their kids and how they're doing in school and all that stuff. It'll be a great, great meeting. We could wish. Anybody else for the good? Yes, sir. Or yes.
Okay. Is there any decision on mental health and recovery for an appointment?
I mean, I'm fine to proceed on the two that Lacy and Mr. Harwood, I think are the two.
I'm ready for one. The other one I haven't talked to, haven't done anything with yet. But I, I am okay with Mr. Harwood.
Put him on.
If we want to nominate, can we put him on and nominate him?
I'm great with that.
And then the second one, I'd like to do a little more.
Sure.
If, if we can have another week, there's more time with that. Thank you. Okay, then let's deal with, I'm feeling a little elephant in the room here. We need to deal with, we need to talk about, and that's W R T A, you know, or busing or transportation. So, I know we got some good people here that come to talk about that. Give you a little update from last week. We had some great, great dialogue last week in regards to W R T A shutting their service down effective the eighth, I believe it is. And Mr. Joseph, you made a great presentation to us. It opened our eyes to a lot of things. We had some other great speakers that day that spoke on behalf of that. After we had the meeting, I had a meeting with Mike Saloni in my office. And we sent him right from my office directly to Lordstown. Where Mike, you want to give a, just an update? You met with the mayor?
I met with the mayor of Merta, who he's been with there also. Had a phone number. She calls HR first.
At all to him?
At all to him. First Merta called and I called. We never got a call back.
Okay.
So, that's what that's that is for that one. I mean, I'll try again.
Okay.
It was, again, it was a holiday weekend.
Right, I understand. I could have been on issue there with that.
Right.
But I do, I do thank you for going right from my office directly to Lordstown to handle the thing immediately.
Merta, myself, and the mayor, we all had a really good conversation. And any other H R people that he had, if we call them, we're going to send the information to her.
Yes.
And when I talked to Merta on Friday, she had.
And, and not only that, I got correspondences from you Friday. You set a meeting up for us with the mayor and with Mr. Harris today. Is that who it was with? At the mayor's office today. We have to look at the legality of that now between Mar and myself, being able to attend for educational purposes or not.
Right.
Which we'll have to get some consultation on that.
Well, that, and I'm going to talk about that after the meeting.
Okay. And I don't know if the mayor did a releases a special meeting, if he made a public, if he did the stuff he needs to do for us to go in there and make any decisions on anything or if we could just attend on an educational basis. Again, we got to get consultation on that so we don't violate any open meeting stuff. But we, one or both of us will be there for sure today to move the process forward to see what Warren is willing to do, see what we can do, see what, what proposals they may have. And like I brought up the meeting last week, I want everything to be on the table. It isn't just one, this is just W R T A. It's transportation, period. And if Joe's Taxi Service jumps in here and says, hey, I can provide a service at this cost and I get these people where they need to go, we're going to entertain it. I think it's fair, or it's an issue of fairness to entertain all offers of who can come with the best deal for our citizens and the best deal for the taxpayers that is going to work for the most amount of people at the best service, at the best rates. And if there are too many big loopholes and roadblocks to go over it, those are ones I would say we don't consider because we want the best service. It's got to be kind of at the forefront. And then I would say the best cost will come after that. But we need the best service to make sure it scratches all the needs of what we have. We have people that need to get to work. We do have the Warren Express. They said will keep continuing. That's one I saw when I pulled up here earlier today, that we'll do the route from here back to Youngstown. That's still going to continue. But it's the legs off of that that we've had in the test to Lordstown, to Elm Road that we're going to lose. And we need to see the data, at least I need to see the data on that. And then we need to figure some solution. We've been working on it for two weeks now. Like I said, Mike did a lot of legwork. I did some legwork myself Thursday and Friday and bringing myself up to speed on what I didn't know from the past and being the new guy. I'm sure there is. I'm sure there is. But with that, does anyone in the room have anything to add to this?
But I'll give anybody else. First of all, I'd like.
Say your name and stuff for the record first so, so we can make sure we capture it.
Sure. My name is Mark Joseph. I'm a resident of Niles. First of all, I'd like to apologize for what I saw on way. I don't think us as residents should have treated any of you like, any of you like we did. And I would, I would appreciate, because I've been to meetings for the city council in Niles and when Marino was running the, the meetings. Don't let them do it. I mean, let's talk business. I, because I, I mean, they, they just weren't appreciative of what you guys do. I just didn't see it. I didn't see any respect for you guys. But that's my first meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that I apologize to all of you that we shouldn't have treated you guys like that because your work is extremely difficult. Regarding the transportation, today, I talked to a couple of people. I've been with, I've been riding W R T A for a long time, so I know a lot of those people in there. The workers, not so much the administrative. I don't know any of the administrative. But what I got today, and this is a ripple that you got, you have to understand if you don't already know it. I was told a couple of days ago, in order to go to, go to work or go to my therapy at Planet Fitness, and I live a quarter of a mile off of four twenty-two. I'm a quarter mile off that. I have up to three-quarter. It used to be three-quarter of a mile, right? But I can't go to therapy. I'm probably going to lose my job part-time. I, you know, it's important for me because I work with disabled people. And there's a number of people that I know that are going to be suffering from it. You know that. Everybody here knows that. But here's a twist that we didn't know, and I found this out yesterday and I followed up on it today. We will, they, they do say that they have S S Ts, which are the small buses that pick people and they do basically a curb to curb. It's called something else, but they would be able to pick me up in my apartment, take me to where I needed to go and bring me back as long as that was within three-quarter of a mile of four twenty-two. Fortunately for me, it's right. It's all a tenth of a mile. It's perfect. The problem is that because of the situation, they do not have the vans or the S S Ts to curb to pick people up. So, they do offer the service. They just, according to them, they just don't have the vehicles to do it. It is available, so how, this is how you get through it. I had to call this morning at seven o'clock, and I'm not a morning person. God forbid I get up that early. I called at seven in the morning and that's when their phones start. At seven in the morning, there was no ride for me for the entire week next week. Did I have it checked a little bit in advance? There's nothing. According to one of the dispatchers, or I don't know my, I don't know what their titles are, customer service, I would have to start calling at six-thirty in the morning and then be, let it ring until seven. The phones open up, so I could be one of the first people in queue to even have an opportunity to get a ride.
That's through W R T A, right?
That's through W R T A, yes. So, I'm going to rely as much as I can on Comfort Caravan. I'm in a chair. And that's the other beef I have that if Garwin and USA Taxi want to play in this game, I'm using, if they want to, if they want to play in this arena, they have to offer opportunities for people in wheelchairs. Otherwise, you're just not going to have enough, not going to be able to fit the needs of the consumers. You're not. And I've been, like I said, I've been riding for nine years. Unless there's something magical like, not magic, but like you're off, like you guys are saying, we got to check everything and they, but just in the back of your head, please, just think that the people they say we want to play, they got to be able to handle wheelchairs because that's a major piece of this for people that are blind, right? So, I'm hoping that Comfort Caravan can loosen up or I don't know how, I don't know how the contracts go. I don't care how the contracts go. That's my only viable source because they're the only one that does a wheelchair. Just giving you food for thought. That's all I'm doing.
Those are valid points. No, absolutely.
Hart, let me talk to you about Comfort Caravan.
Okay.
I'll talk, yes, to me.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thanks.
And I'll tell you how it's working.
'Cause I honestly, you know, Mike, I don't, I don't help.
Now, you want Comfort Caravan to tell you guys today?
What's that?
What, is that all you guys?
No, this was my last ride with WRTA.
Okay.
And, and honestly, all the people that I've, we, all the, all the.
How do they accommodate the wheelchair?
Comfort Car, uh, wait a minute.
WRTA.
They have, I, I believe even their big bus, I know the SSTs, smaller buses, all have, the smaller buses and the vans. The vans have a flip-out, um, ramp. Almost like for a dog ramp.
Yeah.
Where you can roll up in. And they, they help you go in. 'Cause it's a little bit of a steep climb, unless you're in an electric, you're okay. Uh, I usually use manual. Um, their SSTs, they have hydraulics. And their big bu, uh, on the side of the vehicle. And the big buses, I believe they either have, and I haven't investigated this enough, 'cause I don't do the big bus. Uh, they either have ramps that flip out, or they have hydraulics.
Right.
But they can accommodate a person in a wheelchair no matter what. Am I correct?
You're, you're right. They're either or. I don't know if they have, both or the other.
Uh, have you traveled outside the area much at all?
Oh, I do, well, what I was, what I was doing was, I was going to the Boardman YMCA. No offense to any, Trumbull County, but it's a really good program. Um, and so I can do my wa, aqua therapy to get my legs back. Um, and then when this happened, it sliced it. So, I called my podiatrist. She wrote a prescription to saying I need this, and Comfort Caravan, Comfort Caravan is going to accommodate me in that respect.
I mean, have you been Akron, you, uh, Cleveland, any of those other areas and had to utilize transportation?
Actually.
Have you seen anything anywhere that we should know about, or that you've seen outside the area that we haven't seen here that, that you would recommend, or something we should look into?
I've, I've, I've lived in some big cities, so I don't know if that's fair. Chicago's got an excellent transportation, as far as I know. But, you know, it's a big city, so I get it. Um, WRTA actually had an Akron run. It was no charge, it would take you to Akron, to the RTA station, and then you would go to Cleveland from there, or anywhere you wanted to go. I went down to Columbus. Um, yeah. So, around here, I've not been affiliated or, uh, uh, I've only had a couple of rides outside this area, Trumbull and Mahoney County. Yeah, but I've lived in a lot of places. Uh, a lot of over, over in Asia and Europe, I spent a lot of time over there. And their transportation system is a thousand times better than ours, but I don't know how their infrastructure is.
Right. That's apples and oranges there compared.
Yeah, it really is. But it is amazing what they, how they can move people. China moves people incredibly fast. Billions of people. I did hear, we did have a, um, and I'm sorry, stealing your thunder, or stealing this time, but you mentioned, um, we, I work for, uh, for Western Reserve Independent Living Center. Uh, so we're a nonprofit that handles disabled people in a variety of ways. Uh, one of our, one of my coworkers went to Montana to see how their transportation system worked up there. And she came back with a, a lot of information, uh, and I can tap into her a little bit more. Um, I swear I would never get into transportation, but you never say the word never. It always messes you up. Um, but I can tap into her and see what they're doing that's different, or what we can snack on, uh, grab onto that might be able to assist us in getting over this hurdle. 'Cause that's all it is. Gotta figure it out. All right, I'm done.
Anybody else have anything regarding transportation from our guests? Mark?
Just that I'm looking forward to the meeting with Warren. Um, and I don't know how we're gonna do it, because, uh. I don't believe the meeting was advertised. Uh, it was given a twenty-four hour notice to the press, so it probably would only require one of us to be there. Um, it's a question we can ask the prosecutors on, I guess.
We'll check that out and see if it's just an informational meeting, that they're gonna give a presentation of what they wanna do or whatever, and we don't. Not gonna make any decisions, not gonna make any votes, we're not gonna do that stuff, so let's, I guess we'll get consultation, we get done with this meeting to make sure whatever we do. It's, it's gotta be done. You know, I, I've never met Dean Harris in my life yet. I've never had a transportation meeting. I've never had any exposure and all of that, and it would be remiss for me not to have those meetings and do that stuff. Um, if we're gonna make decisions here quickly, um, that, that needs to get done. Now, WRTA, at the earliest, from what they told us, is December route. You know, so there's nothing we can do right now. There's no bridge, there's no extension that I've seen available out there. Nothing that I've heard yet. Now, this meeting maybe may bring something more that we don't know. Um, you know, maybe there's some type of bridges that's out there that they can utilize. I don't know. And of course, if there was, we would fight and, and ask for that to make sure that we do what we can, so people weren't just left behind dry. You know, this is, uh, uh, the big issue that's gonna be an expensive issue any way you cut it, that's gonna affect the lives of a lot of people in the county. And in the future of our county, and the eyeballs on our county from outside, too, that we need to make the right decision and.
Yeah, definitely.
We need to, uh, we need to figure it out. Uh, Otter Yoder.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, I had been thinking about this a little bit, because, um, years ago, I was community columnist for the Trib. Back in twelve, thirteen, and at that time Carl Clements, who I'm sure you know. Uh, approached me a, about the issues with the transportation then, and I, I did a lot of research back then about that, that transit system. That we now ha, we now don't have the Transit Board and how it was set up. And one of the things that I came across at that time was an opinion from the prosecutor's office with regard to setting up the Transit, Transit Board. And recommending at that time that they, um, commissioners avail themselves of a program that existed then through ODOT. Which would do a, um, basically a transit survey and kind of assess what the needs were for the county. And what, um, and offer, um, recommendations on how it should be set up. They did not take that advice at that time, the board did not. I do not know if ODOT still offers that. At that time, it was free to the county. I don't know if ODOT still offers that, but I think certainly it would be worth looking into for the long-term solutions, so that we do it right this time.
How many years ago was that?
That was probably twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, that, that, and I'd have to look at my paperwork from it and I'd have to dig it out. Uh, 'cause I had done a records request on that, as I was researching it, and never got to write more about it, because I went ahead and ran for trustee and I wasn't allowed to write anymore. But, um, that was, I think it's worth looking into. Obviously, you've gotta get the short-term solution, that's priority. But in the back of your minds, as you start looking at long-term stuff, I certainly think it's worth looking into to see if ODOT still does that. And maybe Mike can research that for you.
I have no time calling up to ODOT to find out.
Please do that, Mike. That's your assignment for after today's meeting.
If you do, tomorrow I will do that.
Um. If, if I could make a comment on your.
Yes, sir, Mr. Joseph.
Do you have to?
No, I just said your name, so that's funny that way, so.
This is actually where I met Mr., your Commissioner Campbell, basically, you don't remember. Um, you had hair back then.
Oh, my.
Before the job. Um, we, there were a couple of surveys done by outside groups, not ODOT.
Right.
I don't know if you remember that, or during your research.
I, I don't remember that specifically, but I do remember really specifically, 'cause it stuck out to me, that they had that opportunity. It was something that at that time ODOT was doing for free, giving them a complete assessment of all the needs. Because we can sit here and talk about, oh, North needs this and South needs that, but the reality is, there's professionals that study this and know this and understand this. Inside and out, and if we have that, if we have the ability to access those without it costing us. And doing it, doing it, setting it up from the foundation, right? That's the best way to do it.
There were, there were two meetings. The last one was when I met, uh, Commissioner Campbell, and, um. I was involved in two of, I, I was an attendee in two of them, and I can't think of the outside company that did it. I don't, uh, uh, Mr. Salamone, you weren't here back then.
Yeah.
Uh, this is before you came aboard, and when you had hair. Uh, but they both.
I'm trying to remember, I can't.
They both swam like a rock. It was ILS, or I can't think of the name of it. What?
RLS.
That was RLS.
Our, our contract was all got. Their, their contract.
You were brand new as a commissioner, and it was like, who is this guy?
It was, it was, um.
Yeah, and they didn't really pan out. I don't see any results from those, or it could be my fault.
And you, and you, you can do all those assessments, too, if you don't listen. You know, that's the thing. We, I, I come from township background. We do, uh, comprehensive plans and all of that. And then sometimes those plans get shoved down the shelf someplace. So, you, you know, you have to look at it. But I, I just certainly think as we're in this place where we're sort of starting from the ground up, we, obviously, we wanna get something temporary. We wanna try to accommodate particularly our workers, our workforce folks. Um, but in the meantime, or in the meantime while we're doing that, we can also be looking at the future in long-term, a long-term plan that's gonna work.
What's RLS?
Alexandra. I guess that's my question. I just, in general, am asking Alexandra DeMonge, not in my age or capacity, but as a Trumbull County citizen. Why haven't we started with the townships? I heard us kinda start to talk about this, but why are we not pulling the township trustees, the cities? Um, I think that we really need to look at that. I, I think that we need to sit down. I know it's gonna be a long haul, but we gotta be in this if we wanna win this. So, we need to really get the ball rolling. We need to sit down, we need to schedule the meetings, and we need to actually have them gauge, them partner with us to gauge their interests, right? We don't wanna force this upon townships and cities that, that don't need it, and that's just money wasted. I really think that we, that's, I'm just stating from a personal perspective, and I do live in Trumbull County, so I care very much. We really need to look at where the need is, a, and we've gotta get numbers, not rides, numbers.
And that's why I think.
Who needs the ride, period.
That's why I think this, we have seniors, we have handicapped individuals, for the most part, there is a means out there. We do have a system with the four providers that we have, um, through, uh, through the fifty-three-ten grant that we, that we have, the Garwins and those people. So, there is, we don't say, we're, there are people, everyone's left out.
Yeah.
We do have something through Medicaid, through, people that wanna get to work through Job and Family Services. So, we've got that little bit of a niche covered. It's the average person that, once you go to the doctor, once you go to work, once, you know, the, the person that doesn't fit in those categories. That's the one we're kinda leaving behind right now without this service.
Right.
This, this temporary service that we've had from WRTA. So, we gotta fill the holes as we can, and if there's a blanket one that covers everybody, that's great. If there's just something that's gonna provide for people that want jobs, that's great, too. I think the other things after that, just transportation, they hear to there, 'cause they want to. That might be the back burner things, but I think we have to put an emphasis right now on getting the people to work that wanna work. And getting the people to doctors that will need to go. That's gonna be kind of a focus a little bit. And see who, who can do this thing, and, and what's the price for that? You know, we know, we know WRTA's a seven million dollar price tag, but it's not covering everybody. It's not covering the rest of the township at this time. We do know whatever system we get's gonna need to grow. Um, granted, but I can never see, you know, WRTA buses running through Kinsman Square. And, 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 and Mesopotamia at the commons. I mean, I, that's just, doesn't seem feasible.
I don't even know that their infrastructure is set up for that. So, that's another thing, too.
Right. Doesn't seem feasible for anything like that.
It's not.
But there are people in Kinsman, there are people in Mesopotamia that go to doctors also, that work, that we can't discriminate against them.
Correct.
Uh, at the same point. Now, both of them are gonna be here in Warren. I get that. You know, people gravitate to the cities. Um, that's something where we need to work with the mayor, like, 'cause that is a city of Warren issue, maybe a city of Niles issue. Those are things.
Gerard, the bigger cities.
Gerard, we need to work with them.
Liberty.
If those are, their citizens are gonna benefit the most.
Right.
Now, I know over the past, Niles had their own system. Warren, and then, and then we absorbed it all, and then that went away, and now we're back to clean slate again. So, we, we may have to go back in time. We may have to look at how, what brought us to get to the point where we are now. And learn from our past mistakes, and then create something that's gonna be more long-term, well-suited for everybody. We wanna grow in Trumbull County. We want more jobs. We know we have more employers coming here. And to do that, this is all part of the plan. You know, we can't have people come here, um, and not a place to live. We can't have people come here and not be able to get to work. We can't have people come here and not have enough schools for them, and not have enough healthcare for them. Those are all pieces of the puzzle for future economic development that we have to have here. Now, it's just a matter of, you know, we are, we haven't had that windfall of money yet, and tax money coming from those businesses. We've gotta kinda front the money. We gotta spot them on this, and hope that when that happens, we'll be repaid, or we have a system at that time that we lay down now, that will pay for itself later. Um, I, I am, as, as Mark, or as Commissioner Campbell says, you know, I don't wanna put the tax on every citizen in the county. To pay for services for, um, a minority of the users that are gonna use them. You know, there are more people that won't than will. Um, but at the same time, we are government in a sense. We gotta take care of our people, we gotta take care of our citizens. We gotta, we gotta look at doing whatever we can do for everybody. Um.
And ju, and just so we highlight the cost of this, it can't be stated enough. Everybody knows in, in Trumbull County, the, the sales tax is six point seven five percent. But what people don't realize is, we operate the general fund on one percent. The other five point seven five percent goes to the state. We only operate one percent, the entire general fund, the courts, the jails, every essential and effective service that we have here in, in, in the county. For the most part, it's under the commissioner's offices, are through, is through that one percent. We're asking for another quarter percent, a quarter of what we paid the entire general fund for, for transportation. Or that's, that's the proposal. I just think it's, it, it, there's, there's a different and more effective and cost-effective way to do this. Especially when we don't have the population of Chicago or Akron or Cleveland. You know, we don't have that major metropolitan city. We need a blended system, we need a hybrid system, we need some fixed routes ideally, and then a lot of, uh, door-to-door services. With, with the providers that we already have, and, and wheelchair providers as well, and sort of thing. Just to throw a quarter of what we fund everything on, to transportation for a service that, I hate to say this, is not, it's not a statutory mandated service of this, of the county. I mean, that's not to say we're not committed to it, but we don't have to have any transportation at all. Uh, uh, um, that's not to say that I wanna have that. But at the same time, that quarter percent and that seven million dollars, think of it, if you put it in senior levy. How, how many, we have waiting lists on senior levy, and how many more seniors we can assist. We can, and do transportation with that. I mean, uh, that's a lot of money, to just throw a transportation.
And our sales tax is less than some neighboring counties.
All neighboring counties.
There is, there is competition. There's a reason our Eastwood Mall and our four twenty-two corridor is being successful. There's people still shop here. If not, if we had the alternative, a lot of people still go to Pennsylvania to beat the sales tax. And so, we are competing. We get to a point where we raise ours up to a certain point, we're hurting our own businesses here. By driving business outside the county, and it becomes more cross-effective for them to say, let's go to Cleveland, we'll go to Youngstown, we'll stay home. And I'm talking big, big-ticket purchases. We have car lots, we have a lot of A, ATV dealerships and golf cart dealerships and everything else here. Where people are paying five grand, ten grand, twenty grand, eighty grand on things. You add, put the sales tax on that, the difference of six point seven five to seven percent. That does hit someone in their pocketbook a little bit, and maybe people come to Trumbull and buy their car or their truck here. Or buy a big-ticket item here, buy their washing machines, whatever it is, refrigerators, at our Menards compared to going to Home Depot and Boardman. 'Cause they can save a little bit of money on the sales tax. Not everybody thinks that way on little things, but that is a part of the factor. That we do have success with our businesses here where our sales tax is. We don't wanna price ourselves out of the market and destroy our home-based businesses either because of that.
And Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, and I'm not advocating for voting for a tax increase of either side, right? But one of the things that Commissioner Campbell Mesa mentioned, brought to mind something. I, I spent a little bit of time with Attorney Danzo yesterday. One of the things, the things that came up was, um, this, all of this, right? And, um, he pointed out to me, um, that part of the talk at the time when this initially came up before. Was possibly rather than, um, doing a quarter percent sales tax just for transportation, do it for general fund. Fund, use part of that increase for transportation and part of it to enhance some of the other services. So, that's just one other option on the table.
I would be more in favor of that than I would seven million dollars.
Right. And again, I'm not.
Because you can do senior services, you can do a lot of.
There's a lot of.
And I'm not saying I'm in favor, but I'm. And I'm not saying I'm in favor, but I'm.
There's a lot, yeah, there are a lot of things that we, we sit here and kind of, you know, penny ante on some things. And, and I just, um, that, it was just something that came up, and because you said that, that was, I just wanted to point out that that's another option, right? There's options to do nothing, right? As far as raising taxes goes, the option of a quarter percent just for WRTA, which nobody other than one person seems to be in favor of, that's sort of a middle ground option.
And, and the thing too, elections are costing, we know that. We read all that in the papers, we see what license costs is. From the general consensus of what I get, I, I think if we put it on levy, I think it would be slaughtered.
Right, and I think it's.
And I think what's putting on there is gonna cost money.
Right.
So, so the hint that, no, 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 the people want it, put it to the ballot, put it to the ballot, because they want it, they want it, they want it. I honestly don't think that's the case, and I think each citizen that reads this or does it would say, hey, would I vote for that or not?
Right.
And we even saw the poll in the Tribune last week.
Yeah.
I mean, it went down.
I agree.
In flames. I mean, it wasn't just a little bit that it got beat by. There's a lot of people in this county, and a lot of people in the county are aware, and they're woke, and they're voting, and they are voting their pocketbooks, they're voting their future. And they're taxed to death on a lot of things.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I mean, thank God we take care of our seniors, we take care of our disabled, for the most part, we take care of our safety services. But whenever you see a new tax or an increase, hell no. People don't want that here in this county. So I think that's just a Band-Aid to say, well, we'll put it and let the voters decide. That's just white, that's kicking the can down the road. Because then, if the voters voted down, we're right back to square one. Let's do square one now and find a solution that is gonna work, that we know is a hundred percent foolproof, that we know we are gonna be able to pay for, rather than, let's throw a hail mary pass, and maybe they'll pass it and solve all of our problems here as commissioners. I don't think that's gonna happen in any way, shape, or form.
Can I ask you this? Uh, um, yeah, I'm, um, Mark Joseph Miles. Um, pardon it. Is there a timeline? What is, what is your milestone date? When, when do you think we can have a resolution? Six months later?
Can I answer that? Yeah.
Okay, Martin.
Mike Selma.
Yeah, Mike Selma from High Transit. Originally, it was a three-year plan that I had put together. I was gonna come to the commissioners, end of this year sometime, figure out what we were gonna do because, um, and I'm, Camp, Mr. Camp, uh, Council Mesa asked a question. Question was, and if I'm incorrect, please, uh, tell me. Question was, we want good numbers. Do not have good numbers with community bus service. We didn't know the actual transportation was. Council Mesa and Mr. Pooda wanted good numbers. Now we have two years of solid numbers. So we, that was my idea. Come back after two years, and we would make a decision where we would be moving to. But because of what happened out with WRTA, it moved this timeline up a little bit. But we do have good numbers for almost a year and a half, one or two years. Uh, we don't have the data yet, but we do, we can get the data where, uh, the plans are coming from. I have a spreadsheet that, uh, Senior Levy Administrator has. She's gotta put the information together. We can actually get it, and it will break down each township, how much they're actually, uh, dealing. So that's, that was all the information we wanted, and the idea would be to go back to the township, the mayor, and say, here's what we need to do. That was the three-year plan, not the, more to a two-year plan.
That three-year plan is not gonna work for them.
No, 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 the three-year.
Absolutely not.
It's gotta be moved up, so that's one of the reasons we're having this meeting today, for, uh, Mayor Warren, uh, Mayor Franklin and Warren, what we can do too. So, um, my idea was within the next six months to have something.
And I think, from a resident's point of view, forget the disability age, all that stuff, from a resident's point of view, um, it's the awareness. If we, I give our residents some credit, sometimes too much, uh, but if we told them, hey, look, we're, I can't, I'm not a politician, I don't know how to. But they have to have it. Right now, they feel like they're, they're dumped in the black hole, and there's no outcome, because really, people are in, they're struggling for transportation, all that, you know. Uh, and let's face it, the senior levy, those guys worked their butts off. It's amazing they can do what they do with the amount of money they make, with the amount of money they have. Yeah, they're running in the red all the time, aren't they?
Well, they're, they're, they're getting the most out of their services, yeah.
Okay.
And they have, and they have waiting lists on certain services.
That's why I'm not a politician.
No, but they.
Uh, but if, if there was some type of acknowledgement of, hey, this is, this is gonna be tough, and it's gonna take us a few months, um, not to give them a deadline, but you gotta let the, you gotta let the public know, otherwise you're just gonna get, no, stuff thrown at you.
No, you're absolutely right. You gotta have something out there that's a suitcase for them, something they can shoot for, yes. The worst is for, because if you don't, it's good for, that day, it's good pushback. There's never a day that works just going and going.
And it, and as Mike said, we got thrown sort of a curveball, because we were expecting this to be three years, a three-year plan.
Yeah, that's what it was.
It turned into a two-year plan.
We were.
Because they, they, the funding was taken away. So now we're scrambling to get these numbers together and make sure when we go to these communities, when we go to the city of one, which we're gonna do today, when we go to Howland, when we go to Niles, when we go to Gerard, we're gonna say, these are the, the residents in your municipality, and this is the ride that they're getting. What are you able to contribute so that we don't have to go to the ballot? We'll help you. We want to help. We want to match. But at the same time, what are these participating communities able to give to the pot too?
Yeah, you gotta pony up.
So that we don't have to go to the voters and get in the pot.
And they should. They're getting the sales, they're, I mean, they're getting income tax out of these people that are going to work. You know, they, they should pony something up to get their people to work.
That, uh.
Not go at it alone, but, but go at it together.
I, I was involved in it for a number of years, and I talked about, why aren't we going after the mayors of Gerard, the mayors of Hubbard, the mayors of Newton Falls, the mayors of.
Well, we had a system at one time that was not, that was maligned, uh, right, wrong, or indifferent, that was, that was, uh.
It is what it is.
A transit board that was controversial, right, wrong, or indifferent, it was.
Yeah.
And, and these participating communities didn't want anything to do with that, because they heard horror stories, and they, they saw things on the news, and they, newspapers. We've changed that culture. We don't have the transit board. It's directly under the commissioners. We have competition. Competition drives down price with the four providers. So we're able to do some good things. We just wanna, we wanna augment this system. We want to add to this system. We don't want to completely transform it. We, we need some fixed routes. I do agree with you that we need some fixed routes. Do we need five of them? No. I don't think we do. We need fixed routes, and if we can a la carte it with, in other words, with, with WRTA, where you don't have to join, we just want to pick and choose this service or this service, and then the communities that benefit from it, let's all get together and pay as we go. As opposed to, you know, a sales tax, where we've gotta go in people's pockets. That's what I did.
So you are reaching out to the, the mayors.
We're gonna have to, yeah. Today's the Mayor Warren's first step.
Okay, so this is the first step.
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that.
Yeah, that's the meeting today.
I think they're, they're the Achilles' heel.
Well, and not only the, the, the mayors, we're gonna reach out to the private sector too.
And townships, if they, maybe townships, you know, the larger townships have ridership that we can identify. You know, once these numbers come back from Diane, which, again, we were throwing a curveball, we don't know these numbers just yet, but we're, we're compiling the data. Once these numbers come back and we say, wow, Howland does have X amount of riders, we can go to Howland Township and their trustees and say.
Or Champion, or.
Or, or whoever, Warren Township, and say, what can we, what can you assist us with? We want to provide this service to them, but we need buy-in from you guys too, as, as the local community.
We need, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're just making me think, and I apologize.
No.
But when you're, when you're reaching out to these rural communities, the townships, things like that, there's one thing that's stuck in, stuck in my throat, uh, that happened to a couple of my, a couple of my consumers. So if there were a couple of my consumers, there's hundreds out there that are suffering the same thing, because we're not an enigma, um, where they can't get rides because fire won't, they're a half mile, the, the driveway is really long. And they can't get down their driveway for whatever reason. You've heard these stories?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about.
Well, and that, and that's where I'm wondering in my head.
And that's a rural, that's a rural issue.
And that's what I'm wondering in my head, for the price we pay for a bus, and what it costs for a bus to run, and what it costs for that whole program, or what it is, and what they want? If we had an Uber-based system or something like that, where you had drivers out there, is one bus ride worth seventeen Uber trips? That someone could go directly to someone's house, pick them up at their driveway, at their door, take them to where they need to go, take them to work, pick them up afterward? If we find through this survey that majority of these people need to get to Lordstown, or they need to get to Niles, or wherever the jobs are, and we could fulfill that need, maybe even at a bus stop, one, one person brought up to us, um, one of your providers, Garwin, or one of them was with you the one day, said, hey, I'd be happy to send my, my vans to pick people up at the Youngstown terminal. If you got Warren Express, they could take Warren Express to Youngstown. I'll have my van there to drive them to Lordstown. That way, I'm only picking them up at one point, so they still get a little blend where they ride the bus.
Yeah, like carpooling.
But, but then it's like a carpool. They'll pick, we'll pick them all up at this time, to get them at work at seven AM, you know, at, at Lordstown, drop them off at whatever business they want. Then we'll do our loop, you know, eight hours later, and then bring them back to the bus stop in Youngstown. Then they could ride it back to Warren there on the Warren Express or whatever. So there's, there's blends, hybrid things you might be able to work too, rather than, than sending people all over the county. Let's go to these bus stops that are functioning, and then have the, the Uber-type thing where it's free, or four bucks, or whatever it is in the county, or whatever it is, to get them to and from the business, and then maybe, maybe the Foxconn's and the Altiums or something share, shares with us to get their employee there. You know, what's it worth to them?
I've been a big fan of carpooling. Some of the cities I've lived in, not necessarily big cities. I've lived in small ones too. Um, carpooling was a major, people would go to one spot, drop their cars off, and take a ride. Um, um, shoot. So we have a lot, no disrespect to anybody, but we do have a lot of foreigners at Lordstown, right? I, I live with a bunch of South Koreans. I lived in Asia for a while. No disrespect at all. Um.
And they're communal. They live together and they work together, so that would be easy to get them what they need.
And they understand the communal effort. In a carpooling situation, if they could go to one spot, you would not have a problem with it.
And what would be more comfortable for them too?
Yeah.
Riding home with, with the people they work with, in a safe environment, a van or whatever, or taking a city bus in a foreign country, foreign land, mixed in with a whole bunch of people that are taking them all over the place.
Exactly.
I think it, I think that just makes a lot of sense to me.
Oh, absolutely. And then, but then you have to get the buy-in from the manufacturer or from the company.
Sure.
Because the, but their, their schedules gotta match the, the rides, right? So the, so that's where the manufacturer or the company needs to pony up.
Or the county, you know, we can, we can assist, especially when you're not tied to all those federal regulations that you need to be. Uh, here, here's the point though, when you look at some of these, we have five fixed routes, right, Mike? Five?
Five.
We have five. Everybody talks about rides. It's not rides that really should be counted, because that doesn't count. Rides, it should be, that doesn't mean individuals that rode. That means rides. You can have one person that rode the bus four times in a day, and that's usually what happens. We, and when you break down the numbers, we weren't paying it, what, what the state was paying, uh, for this program. One of those routes was taking seventy people, sev- not seventy people, I almost did it there, seventy rides a month, seventy rides a month. That breaks down to two hundred thousand dollars for that route a month. Two hundred thousand, or no, a year.
No, it's a jump, uh, you know, jump out a year.
Two hundred thousand a year for that, for, for those seventy rides a month. That is not efficient. That's not efficient. If the county had to pay that, and that's what you, you're talking about, if you joined WRTA, you'd be, those, that seven million dollars would go to services like that, that we don't need. We need to find the rides that are, that you had six thousand people ride the, here I go again, six thousand rides a month, as opposed to seventy. Now, that's more, that, you're servicing a lot of individuals, and you're getting more bang for your buck with the two hundred thousand a year. But to take two hundred thousand a year to get seventy rides a month, it's just, it's, I can't.
You buy a whole car for that a month.
Yeah, you can give them one more service for that. All right.
Um, yeah, when I was with Trumbull Transit and with WRTA, rarely, and this is five, six years I rode with both of them, um, rarely did I ride with somebody else. Rarely did that happen. And that was one of the first things I complained about when they talked, this was years ago, when they were talking about ridership and exactly what you're bringing up, Commissioner. It didn't make any sense to me.
It cost isn't worth the service.
But, you know, they absorbed it. WRTA, Trumbull County Transit had a massive turnover rate.
Oh, yeah.
That's very expensive for a company. So they're got, they gotta peel that, you know, they gotta peel that pat off somewhere, right? So I think there was some absorption in there too.
Sure.
Uh, but that's my opinion, not fact. Um, that's the other thing you look at. What's their turnover rate? You know, what are they doing with drivers? Why do they, that was a big argument with, you know, with Trumbull Transit. They can't find drivers.
Well, that, that's a buzzing, shortening all over the, the country right now. I mean, you see that everywhere. You, you talk to people who drive this school bus, they can't find drivers right now.
Drivers are hard to find here.
What's that?
The drivers are hard to find here.
Very hard to find right now. Well, this is all, this is all good stuff, and I appreciate you being part of the discussion. This is all good stuff, and it's, it's not to be taken lightly. It isn't anything where we have a cure-all, but this is something that, to just come out and make a motion and say, we vote for it, and the problem's done, and that's, that's not the solution. That's not the solution. And I think we clearly can see that, or I would say consensus agrees, we need to find a solution that fits the problem exactly, and, and not just throw a blanket over it and pat ourselves on the back and think we did our job. That's not the case.
And I think we need to acknowledge that we understand that we are gonna be, as a county, absorbing that, some of that cost, right? I mean, we understand.
Sure.
What I heard last week, very loud and clear, I want to make sure that we stress this, fifty-three-ten and fifty-three-oh-seven grand. We understand, that's how we were able to have Trumbull County Transit at one point. We were allowed to be that entity that used that funding. We no longer have that. So if we don't use WRTA, which I understand, we are understanding as a board and as a county that we are gonna have to pony up. Therefore, we know we gotta get the ball rolling, get people on board, who's ponying up with us, right? And we have to make it about clear, concise numbers, not about people, not about how many times you rode that bus, but where were you going? Were you going to work or not? Were you going, you know, we have to get that down. And I also want to note, you know, one more thing. As I was sitting here, I was thinking about everything as a Trumbull County taxpayer, right? So we have senior levy that we fund. We have school levies that we haven't been able to pass in thirteen years. Lakeview has not been able to pass a levy for thirteen years. You understand, we are losing transportation for our children potentially, because we can't even get levy funding there. Fire and police that we pay for. We have, obviously, Metro Parks levies that are, that are, CSB, you know y'all, that's a levy, right? So those are things that us as the taxpayers are paying for. When you look at all of these services, it's helping somebody specifically, individual, every single day. WRTA would not do that. It's not touching every citizen every day, like these other services that we offer in this county are. So I do think it's just not fair to ask that of everybody else on top of everything else that we have to fund ourselves. Um, so we definitely gotta get the ball rolling, and we gotta partner up with people ASAP. And let's, I want to end with this too. Even if WRTA, we were to put it on the ballot, which we know would be potentially millions of dollars, we just saw that with the special election in August. Um, even if we were to do that, there's still not a sol for the time in between, or what if it fails? So we can't just put all of our eggs in one bucket and say, well, we're voting on it. Ooh, sorry, Peter. I'm sorry. So we can't just say we're voting on it. I mean, that's a year, that's, that's years away. What are we doing in the meantime? That, that's not the answer. Sorry. I was really passionate about that, yeah. I know, I'm so sorry. You're gonna have to call HR. Good luck with that, no, I'm kidding.
It's a nice.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I have my ARPA update, if you want to hear it.
Let's hear it.
Okay. But actually, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, before I get to my ARPA, uh, update, I do want to give you guys, just let everybody know that this week is National Payroll Week. And so, uh, the county auditor is, as some of you might know, is the paymaster for the entire county. Um, but there's about forty clerks throughout the county who submit their payroll information from every department. And, um, our payroll princesses, Kim Engel and Penny Bidas, Bidas, um, process that payroll bi-weekly for fourteen hundred and eighty-five in place. Be aware of that. Now, back to ARPA. Um, I've given you guys a packet. I reviewed, revised the spreadsheet of allocations uh, with the change order approved last week for the BOE roof, uh, adjustment made. Um, and of course, I will adjust, uh, the family court boiler for next week, to ask you guys to vote on it this week. Um, I updated the Johnston EMS location to better reflect the areas benefited. Um, I gave you guys a new map that has that updated as well. Um, I, last week, I promised that I would start reviewing the location on Mr. Masaki's spreadsheet with all the pending projects. Um, and I did do that. I haven't finished it, but we'll have that for you before, uh, or by the end of your time at, when we close everything out. So we'll have an update for you guys when we start to decide. Um, there's a, a few actual requests that I think I need to, um, look at, because it's not necessarily obvious, but. but Mr. Masaki and I are going to work on that together for this week. Um, we do want to remind folks that that portal is closing on the fifteenth. So if we have folks out there that have not submitted requests, they need to be in before the fifteenth. We're getting close, guys. Any questions?
So thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Now Martha, this list you gave us here, these are the ones that are approved already or these ones that are approved or need to be approved or pending or what do you?
These are, this is, these are the ones that are, where the money's been allocated, they've been approved. Some money's actually already been spent. Uh, act, after we do the, we don't have a pending one for, an updated pending one for you today, but we'll have that for you next week because we wanted to add the locations to that. Um, but, uh, the, the, that's why I have to update this because we have that change order for the.
So these ones here that we have are all ones that we already appropriated, one, and you just got to do the thing that you got.
So this tells you how much money we have at, at the time that I wrote this, but, but now I have to add the change order in there. So I will update it for next week.
And some of this money may come back to us if they don't.
Correct. We, as we said, some of these numbers are still soft, but these are what, at, to the best of our knowledge, where we're at, all right? Um, so you may have more than this, hopefully more than what's left here, but, you know, this is what we have committed to. Um.
One question I have on here, and I answered before, but I, I, I still, it's not, still going to my brain. The VP Small Business Grant Program, we did a million and then we did two million on top of this, three million.
One is a grant, one is a loan program, which is a revolving program.
Who administers that?
That's Valley Partners administers that. That's what was decided on way back when. Um, that's a whole other area that I'm not quite ready to get into as far as compliance and things like that. We are going to have to address that. Um, there's, uh, I also want to address, I want to update this as well for you guys at some point with money that's actually been spent, money that's encumbered, that kind of stuff, so it's all in one spreadsheet. However, I felt that it was really important to get the pending requests ready for you at that deadline so you guys can start making this decision, right?
So Valley Partners is a private group, a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit. What, what happened is the first round of funding, so to get everybody up to speed, the first round of funding of the CARES Act dollars, um, when we got that money in, we started a small business relief fund, the immediate small business relief fund. We distributed one million dollars to Valley Partners, uh, to distribute and to come up with a criteria for loss, for revenue loss for all these small businesses for two reasons. Number one, obviously the, the.
Those before ARPA?
This is before ARPA.
Right. This is the true CARES Act money.
This was CARES Act money. So just to give you a history. So we, so they were able to, through, through the CARES Act and through, um, ARPA bill. Because we started this program, Cares for Trumbull, which started out as a grant program and then it sort of morphed to into this revolving loan program. But we spent four million dollars of, uh, federal dollars for small business loans and grants, three million of which went directly to small business grants. We were able to assist over three hundred businesses from that grant program. And the reason why we use Valley Partners is they used to be, their acronym was MEDVAC or I never say it right, but it was, now it's Valley Economic Development Partners, but they're the, probably the foremost nonprofit that deals with small business, um, development and, and sort of, uh, you know, assisting in small businesses in any way that they can in the valley.
They're the local, they're the local SBA provider.
Local SBA provider, thank you. That's what I was looking for. So we, we handed over the project to them because the last thing the commissioners wanted is somebody to say, we have this loan program or you have this grant program, uh, we want funded. And I know Commissioner Cantal Mesa and I know, you know, so we wanted it taken out of our hands. We wanted a third party to be able to administer the money and to be able to, uh, determine how much each business could get through their own criteria. It was a complete success, uh, to the point where we were one of the first counties to institute a program like that regionally. And I believe that the city of Youngstown, city of Warren, Mahoning County, all partnered with Valley Partners after we did because they saw the value of that program and started programs of their own. So, uh, we were able to assist over, again, three hundred small businesses in Trumbull County to the tune of over four million dollars. The revolving loan program is good because during the pandemic, a lot of startups and entrepreneurs couldn't get loans and, uh, this was geared more towards them and it would replenish in perpetuity. I mean, this is something that's going to go on, uh, for small businesses, for, you know, young entrepreneurs and all the like, and existing businesses that they can utilize in other economic tool in their toolbox. Uh, it's going to replenish itself because as the loan gets paid back, it gets back into the, it's back into the loan fund. So, um, two, two great, uh, programs that we did. But it was all under the umbrella of Cares for Trumbull. We did a million in CARES Act money to begin it and then when we got the ARPA money, we, we dedicated another three million to the program. Classified.
And in, um, Auditor Yoder, um, one of the things that I want to circle back to after we kind of get you guys through decide, making decisions with the remainder of the money is how do we establish compliance on some of these things? And, and that will probably involve talking to, um, the accountant that we have contracted with to see if they can either advise us or do it for us. But what we do need to, and I, I met with Auditor Faber a few weeks ago, just kind of a, a meet and greet kind of thing bec- you know, as I'm, I'm kind of new. And, and he did definitely say that we need to make sure that we have, you know, we've given this money to certain entities. We need to maybe do some accountability on it.
Sure.
Um, and I agree with him, it's just how do we process that? And I'll, I'll be coming back to you guys and, and kind of after we get, you know, we kind of just kind of take one step at a time here. But that's certainly on our radar that we need to do that.
And keep in mind that that, that program was, I know the account, for accounting purposes, it could be rather challenging, but we did go through the attorney to make sure that everything, that it wasn't allowable expense, so.
Right, and I understand that. It's just, um, I'm not so much concerned about the grant as the, the loan program.
The loan program, it's going to be trickier, yeah.
Seems like it will be a challenge. Um, and, and the other things, you know, when we've offered grants to, you know, um, just for an example, the Ridge View Tours thing.
Yeah.
That's a pretty easy one. She can just say, this is what I spent. She's got the receipt, that kind of stuff. Those kinds of ones are going to be fairly easy, but that, the loan one is the one that scares me a bit. I don't mean scary, it's just it's, it's scary because it's complicated.
Sure, sure.
Um, but we'll, we'll get it figured out. But it is absolutely on our radar that we have to make sure that, because we don't want to, what, you know, especially given, no offense, Ray, some of the press, we want to make sure that people know that their, that the money's being spent appropriately and that we, that we have safeguards in place.
Sure.
As to like, you know, we get, we've handed money to somebody, what have they done with it, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, entertain a motion.
Motion, Judge.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.